Just turn around.
By the way, City Clerk, the clock back there must be wrong because it says it's a minute two five back there.
Okay, we will set it's five o'clock. Just turn 5:01 now.
All right, let's call the meeting of order.
It's five o'clock somewhere.
All right. All right.
Meeting of February 20th, 2024. And the first item on the agenda, oh, and we do, I was just going to say we don't have a speaker card. We do have a speaker card.
I think that's late.
Amanda Q.
All right. All right. Take your time getting up there.
There's always room for improvement. Hello, councilmember, sorry. There's always room for improvement. And I've discussed these matters with the city manager, and it shouldn't come as a surprise. It appears that someone has directed him not to speak, and I wonder why that is. Recently, there was a post shared by a former campaign manager of Chris Duncan, and I don't know, so I shouldn't say that, actually, sorry. He shared Senator Blake Spears' post and wrote the A-Team. Senator Blake Spears wrote, "Thank you to St. Clemente City Councilmember at Chris Duncan, CA, and City Manager Andy Hall for talking about specifics of St. Clemente Railroad track closure while overlooking the area." And she goes on. The problem with this post was that Senator Blake Spears included the hyperlink at Chris Duncan, CA, which goes to State Assembly pages. This came to the attention of the city manager, and he said, "I asked not to be included, but she insisted." He further added, "I'm wholly independent and do not appreciate my photo being used to insinuate support of any particular candidate. Respectfully declining a photo op is something that is not uncommon. Other city managers have managed to stay out of the limelight in the past. This photo should be the excuse that he can provide to anyone where his photo was used for political reasons. There is nothing wrong with being firm and direct. What are the steps that the city manager will do to avoid other situations like this?" It appears that as he's walking on eggshells because he doesn't want to speak up about things that goes against his better judgment, such as some events or violations of policy or potential brand act violations. For instance, some recent presentations from city council members were not on the agenda, so there was a concern. Whether this is the role of parliamentarian to discuss that, however, there is still a concern. There have been other times where he should have spoken up about legislation that passed on October 7th regarding the district elections, that the legislation that was passed then affected day of January 1st. The members of the public had a right to know that legislation would have an impact when the city could change the maps. Previously, the council stated they could change it at any time. Was it his duty to mention legislation, or was it the city clerks or the city attorney's responsibility? Another example where he should have spoken up was to clarify who authored the staff report for the policy change about consent calendar agendas. The staff report said it was prepared by the city manager when he was not even in the country. It was misleading to the public, and why didn't he clarify it? Or why, more importantly, why didn't the city attorney didn't clarify? The WSL was another event where he parade, WSL Parade was another event where he went against his better judgment since the city did not honor 9/11. However, I wrote two brief emails, and however, upon his texts, he said, "Excuse the drama about the procession tomorrow." If honoring those who perished on 9/11 was drama, then clearly, that surely is nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Amanda. Any further business?
No further business.
So I guess we'll move into closed session.
A motion, okay.
Is that your motion?
Oh, you made the motion, I second it.
Okay, you made it. Anyone, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
I moved the way.
Yeah, you can.
We need to fix the clock in the back because it has a different time than this one. And we're, we're, I'm looking at the one in the back and it's.
Okay, I will make a note of that.
Councilmember Duncan, stop talking to the firefighter and come back to the dais.
We're gonna start the meeting, Chris. We're gonna start with invocation.
Yes, and for the, yes, we'll start with the invocation lead pastor Mark Ambrose. There you go.
All right, let's pray, Lord. Just want to pause and thank you for another day of life. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for the beautiful place that we all live and call home. And I just thank you for these leaders here that are gonna make decisions that impact lives and as they weigh the decisions, the pros and cons and whatever they're confronted. and as they weigh the decisions, the pros and cons and whatever they're confronted with. I just pray you give them wisdom and that they would be unified in today's divided world, Lord. We just pray for unity and we thank you for the privilege of being able to do this and we commit this meeting to you now in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And your name, just your name?
Cash.
You can let the records show that all council members are present.
The record will reflect that everybody is present at the meeting.
And we do not have anything for special presentations tonight, so we do have some cards for oral communications. Would you like me to start calling the speakers up?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the first three. Gary Hedrick, followed by Concerned Resident, followed by Ken Pachekai.
And if, I don't know if we can line up, you know, it might help.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We ready to go here?
We're ready.
Thanks. My name's Gary Hedrick of San Clemente Green. I'm here tonight to ask the council to write a letter on behalf of the community to the California Coastal Commission. We want them to reevaluate the effect of sea level rise on 3.6 million pounds of nuclear waste being stored at San Onofre. New information makes it urgent that we make a plan to move the waste to higher ground now instead of waiting until 2035 per the condition of the Edison permit. Next. The next three slides show the recent problems with coastal erosion at San Onofre and San Clemente. Next. This is a cross-section showing the recent, showing the proximity of the nuclear waste to the ocean and groundwater level. Until now, our concern has been that when the sea level reaches the base of the wall, it will be higher than the bottom of the nuclear waste canisters, submerging them in corrosive water. Next. This slide demonstrates we have a more immediate situation with capillary action. This image from the California State Sea Level Update for 2024 shows that water intrusion can occur much higher than groundwater level with surprising destructive force. The state's science and policy experts illustrate how roads, pipes, and foundations are all vulnerable to wicking action, drawing the water upward. This has many implications for the nuclear waste at San Onofre. Next. In the next three slides, anyone can see the water is reaching the base of the wall during king high tides. The following three slides are examples of how saltwater impacts and erodes concrete and steel. The same is likely to be happening to the nuclear waste canisters underground. That's why we started this petition, asking Coastal Commission to reevaluate, oh, I'm sorry, next. That's why we started this petition, asking Coastal Commission to reevaluate sea level rise now instead of 2035. Next. They need to start planning to move nuclear waste to higher ground while there's still time. Next. Now for a quick update with quotes from a recent San Onofre briefing that we took part in. Congressman Levin said, "At this time, the current situation is neither safe nor effective in the long term." The former chairman of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission said, "The industry has very little incentive to make decisions that are in the best interest of the community." Retired Rear Admiral Len Herring put it this way, "NRC enforcement has been replaced with endless exemptions always favoring the industry's demands." Next. Please write a letter from the city to the Coastal Commission to start planning to move the nuclear waste to higher ground now, not waiting another decade till 2035. Thank you.
You got them backwards. Okay. June 6th, 2023, Councilman Cabral agendized the closure of all pickleball in San G no later than November 7th in order to give neighbors relief from the annoying noise from pickleball. All but Duncan agreed. On November 9th, Cabral and Ann Meyer decided that the neighborhood had not suffered enough from annoying noise from pickleball and reneged on their commitments. This is what Cabral had to say. Slide two, please. If you roll the slides for me, please. These photos were taken between November 9th and last weekend. They're not inclusive of every violation. Council is clear that circumstances have changed. First, there is no compliance with the limited playtime. Second, the city has created an extremely unsafe condition, knowing that the public is scaling a 12-foot fence and has taken no preventative measures. However, one issue has not changed. It's what Mayor James described as annoying-as-hell noise from pickleball in San G, and the city continued violating Civil Code 3480. Mayor Cabral stated the reason for his reversal was "a result of a major concern discussed in closed session." I have researched the closed session agendas between June 6th and November 9th. Correct me if I'm wrong, council cannot discuss anything that is not noticed on the agenda. The only item I found is June 20th agenda, which mentions my complaint against the city for failure to comply with Civil Code 3480, which addresses the fact that it is against the law to allow annoying noise to impact peaceful enjoyment of one's home. There's no caveat that allows it to allow annoying noise between 9:00 to 5:00. As Mayor Cabral stated, "If it doesn't work, we're going to change our vote again, and you do not need to wait six months. Your attempt to appease players who do not wish to play at the $1,400,000 state-of-the-art courts and steed is not working." Pickleball draws some who will never follow your rules, which is evidenced in San Gregorio. Reverse your decision now before someone gets injured. Thank you. Ken Pachekai, followed by Jessica Pinto, followed by Mike K., followed by Lois McNichol.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. I just want to speak quickly on the Mariposa Bridge. We're gonna spend about $10 million, I heard, to put up a 250-foot-long barrier where our Mariposa Bridge was. When I look at that barrier they put up by Casa Romanica, it's not exactly the most beautiful barrier I've seen and not really emblematic of what we'd like our community to be thought of as people walk down the bridge or boat by. So I'm respectfully asking that you all work really hard to ensure the barrier has the aesthetic qualities our beach town deserves and that the placement of the barrier allows for the place, replacement of our Mariposa Bridge and/or that it allows for a continuation of our beach trail by means of a path or otherwise to the pier from North Beach. I'm not an architect or geologist, but maybe we could have the bridge placed directly on top of the barrier. City Council, we have to do this right as we won't get another chance, and the money spent to do this may allow us to leverage our need for a replacement bridge or path. Thank you.
Jessica Pinto, followed by Mike K., followed by Lois McNichol.
Hello, Council. It is my first time here, so I appreciate you taking the time and listening to me. I apologize in advance if I'm redundant, and I'm just here to plant a seed. And I'm here in the rain because I know that some of our residents are unsheltered and they do not have solace from the rain, and that is something that I'm passionate about. Maybe not as much as you are, as you guys have been taking professional action on those endeavors. And I know that our point-in-time numbers are low at only 15, and it makes me wonder what is the right number. And so I recently read a book about ending homelessness, and I had a few surprises in there that stood out to me, and that was that to qualify for housing assistance, residents or persons needed to have income. And in order to gain income, it seems like they would need some support. And as council members, I have several ideas about ways that we could support those that need support. Number one would be a grant program offering income. The income could be very limited. $100 a month counts as income. And then those residents would qualify for housing assistance programs from the federal government. Outside of that, we also would look to see more substantial, low-income housing for those that need it. I know that rents at this time are extremely high, so it seems like a major barrier, and I know that people that are already in the lower income are doing shared residences. I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to have a smaller-scale, almost hotel-like offering for some residents that qualify income levels. When I ran the numbers, if we were to offer $150 to $300 per month for the qualified individuals, that would be about $1,800 per year to $3,600 per year. And if that was to cover all 15 of those residents, that would be $27,000 to $54,000 per year. So I don't see that as an enormous amount to overcome, and there are many grants available. So if that was something that we were very curious about, I feel like we could access that money and funnel it, and then that could help us to create a nice, long-term housing solution. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Mike K., followed by Lois McNichol.
Councilmembers, Mayor, first, I just want to say thank you for doing this stuff. I think sometimes you get a bad wrapper, you get some harsh people around here, and it's gotta be rough. But anyway, I want to talk about our bluff and our coastline. I want you guys to write a letter to Gavin Newsom and ask him to declare a state of emergency. Some of you may have seen the news today. Rancho Palos Verdes, the Wayfarers Chapel, where I got married 20 years ago, has a landslide. They are asking Gavin Newsom to declare a state of emergency. You may have seen the news today. The mayor of San Diego successfully got Biden, FEMA, to declare a national emergency, a federal disaster, and FEMA assistance for the rains in January. Our coastline, which I walked today, has storm damage in the last 48 hours. About 30 big boulders have been dislodged off of Cotton's where I live in the last two days. It's in bad shape. We have local emergencies, almost every major storm now. We have a vital rail line that's been shut down, as we know, five times the last three years. We have infrastructure that's threatened. We have a long list of problems in our coastline and our bluff. We have red-tag buildings, vital infrastructure, an economic impact that's phenomenal, and all kinds of red tape that is preventing us from really doing anything. Let's remember, we've got to change the permit just to change the donor site for the sand. If we have a state of emergency, all that goes away. Coastal Commission, a whole red tape, a whole itney of different organizations that are preventing us from moving forward will be sidestepped. We'll be able to move and move quickly. So I'm asking you guys to piggyback on what Rancho Palos Verdes is doing, to frame the narrative of our situation as an entire coastline that's in trouble. If he doesn't want to agree with that, we can go after somebody else. We can ask Biden. But we'll be framing a narrative. We'll be setting it up, saying, hey, we got a big problem here and we need to deal with it. Our little town is a great place, but we are not able to cope with all of the issues that are going on in the bluff and in our shoreline and with vital national-interest-level infrastructures, the rail line. So I know it's drastic. I know it's radical, and it may not work, but it does set up a viewpoint, a way of looking at it. It frames a narrative. It piggybacks a current news story. Even my cousins in Michigan know about the landslides that are going on here. In a few months, it's gonna be warm. We'll be talking about fires. I'll be talking about fires, and we'll forget all this. But it's a national news story right now, and it is a time to piggyback on that, and I would hope you guys would do that. Thank you.
Lois McNichol.
Hi. I was going to speak about something else tonight, but a previous city council meeting, I just have to take note of what happened there. And that was a meeting where the people that came and presented evidence, documented documentary evidence such as photographs, such as declarations, that they were, that they were willing to sign their names to. Now, I have, I'm going to make this caveat before I go on, that a lot of members of the council up here did state that, that they believe that the lawyer who was here at the time was giving the citizens a bad rap and trying to call them liars because she had continuously stated that the evidence being presented was not able to be actually legally, like legally presented in court. But that was not really the issue. The issue was that here are all these people who have done all of this research, including the regulations that they looked up and presented, including all the slideshows that they gave to you, including all of the photographs that they gave, including all the evidentiary documents that they wanted to, that they did present, and probably did present more that was sent to you in emails and other sources. And still, the lawyer, again, who was given a second chance to come up here, what, all she did was say again that this could have been doctored, thereby calling every single piece of evidence that was presented basically like, a lie, that it was not true. And that was basically a response. Now, again, I will say that the city council did not say, oh gee, yes, we believe you. No, you did not. You did say that that was not a correct statement for her to be making, that the evidence that was being presented should be looked into. Now, that I will state to you. But I will, I do have to commend every single member that was here that night and the residents of San Clemente as a whole, because this was something that was really, really important, and they all came. This house was packed, which normally, no, we don't see it packed every night, like tonight. However, that night, you could hardly get in the door. And everybody was here because they were passionate about it. Now, if they're that passionate about it, where you have people trying to bang their way in, then that must tell you that they have a real reason about why it is bothering them, and it is something that the city council must, must take care of.
Thank you very much.
That is all for oral communications. So next up is motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action?
I don't think there's any items. Next item.
Closed session report, city attorney.
Thank you. The, the council met in closed session on item A. There was direction given and no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, next up is staff communications, and we do have a brief report by Community Development Director Adam Otamian.
Excellent.
What a pleasure.
Hopefully.
You might want to reserve judgment. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Adam Otamian, Community Development Director. I've actually got three updates for you tonight, and I will jump into those. I've actually got three updates for you tonight, and I will jump into those. The first is on bluff property maintenance guidelines. Due to the recent storms and slope movement, the City of San Clemente staff has compiled some information for ease of use by our bluff top property owners to help them reduce the occurrence of erosion due to the rainy winter that we are currently having. This information is provided on the city's website, which the page is www.san-clemente.org/devdocs. That's short for development documents. On that page, which is shown on the right, there's a tab that identifies guidelines for slope properties. I'm showing all of this because while the specific information I'm describing tonight is contained in the slope property checklist, which I'll show you on the next slide, this tab actually has a lot of great information for hillside and sloped property owners, and a lot of that information goes into greater detail than the checklist, which I'm about to show you. There we are. So the slope property checklist is shown on the right, and this is a quick reference guide for sloped property owners, especially those living along the bluff, to check for certain things, specifically water leaks, reviewing drainage, irrigation, landscaping, and monitoring properties for continual changes. In addition to the website that I showed you, there's a quicker way that you can access this information now, and that's on the city's homepage under the latest news section at the bottom of the page. When I put this PowerPoint together, it was the first item listed, however, there's been an update, so it's actually the second item listed now, which is helpful information for slope properties. The page that's shown on the right side of the screen, I've got copies available at the back of the room, and in addition to that, we've got them in our lobby at the front counter of the city hall building. Are there any questions on this information or any clarifying information I can provide?
Yes. Yeah, I have a question, Adam. The irrigation issue with slope drainage toward the street as opposed to toward the back of the property and down the slopes, the checklist is helpful. Do we have any enforcement action or enforcement power to compel current property owners that are having their slope, the water on their property drain toward the slope? Is there anything we can do proactively now at this point?
Yes, and that's a great question, council member. The city's public works staff, in concert with our community development staff, are going to be working with these property owners to review their current drainage. We do find some issues where there's been some unpermitted drainage going to the back of the slope that will be addressed on a case-by-case basis.
So there'll be enforcement action on those illegal drains that are going down the slope?
If violations are discovered, yes.
And there have been some that have been identified?
I'm not sure what the current state of that review is, but we're working with public work staff to ensure that we address any issues of noncompliance that are found.
Thank you.
I do have a few questions. Even like at Casa Romantica, they had a lot of flowers, and they had a lot of watering going on at a certain point in time.
Oh, yes, thank you. So are we addressing that to help homeowners too, to help them understand what kinds of plants and irrigation should be permissible, or do we have a rule regarding what we permit? Or should we have a rule? Or have you even looked into that?
If I can, can you go back one slide? Thank you. On the, under the Guidelines for Slope Properties tab, there's a Recommended Slope Planting Palette, and that's something that we can work with properties owners on. The number at the bottom of the checklist page is for our planning division. Most of the, most changes that may be contemplated by property owners regarding bluff properties may trigger some coastal commission requirements, and so there's some potential permitting issues with those changes, including vegetation management. And so we'll work with property owners to get them the easiest path forward.
My next point, even at Casa Romantica, there used to be an effort to go out and observe concrete structure to see any, to evaluate movement, which is an easy step that could be taken by property owners also to see if there's movement that may cause them to try and cause, call an engineer or other company.
Absolutely, and that's one of our recommendations in the checklist, is to monitor the properties for changes.
Any other questions?
Yes, just one, this is all wonderful information. I don't know very many property owners who are going to go out and search for it on the city website or search for it in our city hall. Is there a way to get this information out to them and be more proactive on them getting it?
Yeah, I think that staff could do a targeted mailing to the properties most likely to be affected by rains. Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? You want to continue?
Yes, I've got two more updates. All right, I'm gonna let Miley handle the slides. The second item is the Park Ranger Program Enhancement Recommendations. So the Public Safety Committee, at their meeting of January 11th of this year, received recommendations from staff related to the Park Ranger enhancements, related to increasing staffing, implementing targeted patrol areas, adjusting shifts and cover structure, providing logistical enhancements, including vehicles and office space, and transitioning the program from the Community Development Department to be better aligned with our public safety personnel in the Public Safety Department. And the Public Safety Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council implement the proposed enhancements, and they actually increased staff's recommendation for vehicle requests to include two additional trucks and two ATVs, as well as additional staff to include six full-time and six part-time park ranger staff. There's a lot of recommendations here, but the timing is quite perfect to align with our city's budget process, and so these recommendations will be coming back to the council as part of the budget process. And so I wanted to give you an update to let you know that that's where that, those enhancements are currently in the process.
So you want to take questions on this item now, or are you done with it?
That's it for this portion, but if you have any questions or I can clarify anything, keeping in mind that this item is going to come back as an agendized item in the future.
Anything?
As part of implementing this or updating this program is you're changing the uniforms, right? It's not like a polo shirt now, now they have like a real official-looking uniform?
Yes, there are some additional enhancements that staff, it does not need council direction to implement, and uniforms are one of those.
And one last thing I'd say is maybe consider, because they're going to be spending some time down at the beach or the Del Mar, maybe a couple of e-bikes or something for them also.
That has been looked at, but we will definitely take a look at that possibility during the budget process as well.
Are we also looking at citation?
That is something that's currently underway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Because don't we have at least two of the park rangers now have site capabilities, enforcement capabilities?
Yes.
And you're planning on enhancing that to be more?
Absolutely.
All right.
One more update, and I'll make this one quick. Miley, if you could go to the next one. In response to some concerns from residents related to the city's policy on receiving anonymous complaints, the Code Compliance Division has instituted a temporary policy to address anonymous complaints. It should be noted that all complaints submitted to the Code Compliance Division are considered crucial for identifying potential code violations and upholding community standards. However, there are certain, what we call priorities of complaints that generally necessitate additional information. Those are the priority two and three cases on the bottom. And so effective at this time, for these less urgent threats or issues affecting community aesthetics, anonymous complaints are no longer accepted. For priority one cases, these being immediate threats to the public health and safety or the environment, such as uninhabitable living conditions, severe hazards, or unsafe structures, we'll still accept anonymous complaints on that. Could you go to the next slide, please? We also want to remind the public that by submitting a complaint, your information is held confidential unless explicitly authorized by the complainant or required by a court order, which in my time overseeing code compliance, we have not been ordered by a court to identify complainants. We maintain that information confidentially. This policy is temporary for the time being, because the Code Compliance Division will be formalizing a policy on anonymous complaints over the next few weeks, and we will be publishing that information on the website to educate the public. And that concludes my staff communications, and I'm available if there's any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
If you wouldn't mind just giving us a little bit of the context from meetings before, other residents that came up of why we need to, why this is a thing that needs to be put forward?
Yes, so this issue came to the council's attention due to some complaints about light fixtures on residential properties. There had been a number of complaints, and I'll say, the number of properties affected was about 186, where people, it appeared that people were just driving around the city looking for potential violations. That is a tremendous toll on staff resources to address those. While there may be violations, some of these issues were related to HOAs, where the HOA got together and said, you know, this is not affecting anybody that lives in this HOA, and so that really forced us to look at our policies and make sure that what we were doing was in the best interest of the public.
Thank you very much. No further questions? Thank you very much, Adam. It was an excellent presentation.
Don't undersell yourself.
Okay.
It's good to set the bar low and then you can see it.
Next item.
Next item on the agenda is under new business, item 9A, Public Safety Committee Evaluation of the Safe Gun Storage Ordinance Proposal by MOMS Demand Action and Introduction of Residential Safe Storage of Firearms Ordinance and Finding the Ordinance Not Subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. We do have some speakers, but we'd like to hear the staff report first.
Let's hear the, what do we, which order do we?
Staff report first, yes.
Staff report first. Let's go to the staff report, and then we'll hear.
Thank you, Mayor.
Adam, just a reminder, yeah, if you want to comment on this and you haven't turned in a card yet, this is your chance.
All right, good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council, Adam Otamian, Community Development Director. The item before you is a report on the Public Safety Committee's evaluation of the Safe Gun Storage Ordinance proposed by MOMS Demand Action. And attached to this is also a proposed ordinance, should the council want to consider adopting an ordinance. The direction that the city council gave at the September 5th, 2023 meeting was for the Public Safety Committee to review a Safe Gun Storage Ordinance proposed by MOMS Demand Action. The Public Safety Committee discussed the proposed ordinance on October 24th and November 28th and concluded that existing state laws comprehensively cover aspects of safe gun storage and that local regulation would not add any additional benefits beyond what state law already includes. The council has, by resolution, resolved that the council encourages all owners of firearms to complete firearms safety training and to ensure all firearms are stored in a safe and secure manner. This was through adoption of Resolution 2021 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Declaring the City to be a Second Amendment Freedom City." In contemplation of the council's review of this matter, staff is providing an ordinance for the council's consideration to address the concerns presented by MOMS Demand Action in a manner that does protect the health and safety of the public, however, without requiring some of the stipulations in the MOMS Demand Action proposed ordinance that the Public Safety Committee was deemed problematic. That was specifically related to requirements that guns and ammunition be locked separately, thereby making firearms less useful in time of need. The proposed ordinance does not substantially burden the right or ability of owners to use firearms for self-defense in the home. The locking requirements in this ordinance apply only to firearms that are not being carried on the person or in the person's immediate control. Additionally, the proposed ordinance also encourages owners of firearms to report lost or stolen firearms to law enforcement. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Let's hear the public comments.
Okay, I'll call the first three speakers, Carol Montgomery, followed by Amanda Q., followed by Candace. Long as you're still lining up, Erin Corn, followed by Lois McNichol. Carol Montgomery?
Yes. Good evening, council. My name is Carol Montgomery, and I've been a resident of San Clemente for 30 years and a volunteer with MOMS Demand Action for guns since. That being said, a lot has changed in the last 30 years, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to support the safe storage ordinance that will close loopholes within the California law as it exists. The loopholes are, the state law does not specify what storage is and only applies to homes with children. I don't have enough time to share every example and statistic of why we need to add or change this ordinance, but here are two. Children can visit any home at any time, and there is a child killed nearly every year using, obtaining a gun that's unsecured. Also, unsecured guns are stolen and can be used to commit crimes. There is an estimated 200,000 to 500,000 guns stolen each year. I know we all value our children and family, and we should want to keep them as safe as we can. So I hope you will support this ordinance, and thanks for listening.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Amanda Q.?
I have a presentation, please. Next slide, please. So Mayors Against Illegal Guns and MOMS Demand Action joined forces back in 2013. The parent company is Everytown for Gun Safety and Support Fund. Next slide, please. Next slide. All donations for MOMS Demand Action are funded by this political action committee, ACT Blue. Next slide, please. Per Wikipedia, ACT Blue Charities, Inc. is an American political action committee and fundraising platform established serving left-leaning and Democratic nonprofits and politicians, helping Democratic campaigns and progressive organizations. Why is the city supporting partisan groups or progressive organizations? And why isn't the city properly vetting whether these organizations or foundations are politically motivated? Next slide, please. Membership of Mayors Against Illegal Guns was brought up by me previously, and just wondering how the City of San Clemente is a coalition member. Next slide, please. Someone from the city had to have signed up based on the required information. Furthermore, they must swear and certify the statements are true and correct. Next slide, please. At the September 5th, 2023 city council meeting, all the members of the public were led to believe that this was a letter of support. However, this is an ordinance. Next slide, please. Looking at the public safety agenda for November 28th, 2023, it says the committee did not support the letter of support. However, it's not a letter of support, it is an ordinance. Next slide, please. And this is part of the, what was in the documents for Public Safety Committee. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So is our city supporting political groups? ACT Blue transformed Democratic politics. Next slide, please. Everytown for Gun Safety Action Fund endorses President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris for reelection. Next slide, please. This is from a video about ACT Blue introducing the new CEO and President Regina Wallace Jones. Of course, you could see who they support. Next slide, please. In an email today, Councilmember Loeffler emailed me today, and he said, "I don't remember exactly what the group originally requested was from the group requesting safe gun storage." The brochure I was given, which explained the background, was Be Smart. I never was given anything with MOMS whatever info. I've been told that these organizations could be lying, could be, and I don't have any knowledge of this." However, he did, because MOMS Demand Action came before the council in 2021 when the Second Amendment sanctuary city came up, and it was a city council member. A friend of Rick, Councilmember Loeffler, Jean James, said he did know about that.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Candace, followed by Erin Corn, followed by Lois McNichol.
Hi. Thank you for your consideration of a local ordinance on safe gun storage. I am a longtime resident of San Clemente with small children, and so I appreciate the state ordinance requiring our households to secure guns. But our kids don't live in a bubble. They are out and about in other people's homes, and kids are naturally curious. That's what makes them so great, right? But we know that almost every day in this country, a child kills themselves or another individual with a firearm, and so as adults, it's important for us to do what we can to keep them safe. Thank you for supporting an initiative to help close the gap with the state requirement and prevent these sorts of tragedies from happening in our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Erin Corn, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Mary Ann Rose.
Council, thank you for having me today. My name is Erin Corn. I'm a San Clemente resident, mother of two young boys. I'm here to voice my support of the Secure Storage Ordinance on the agenda this evening. The intention of the ordinance proposed by MOMS Demand Action was for it to serve as a working draft between the city and our organization. I'm encouraged to see that council staff has provided ordinance number 1773, which addresses the deficit in California Penal Code. The California Penal Code 25100 is deficient in that it does not apply to all homes, only homes where, quote, "a child is likely to gain access to the firearm or accessible to a person who isn't allowed to possess a firearm under state or federal law." Firearms in all homes should be secured. Between 2017 and 2020, over an estimated million unsecured firearms were stolen. As a volunteer lead with MOMS Demand Action, I've engaged with our community at tabling events to share resources and education on the topic of secure gun storage. During one such event, a 10-year-old boy volunteered that his parents owned a gun, and he knew it was hidden at the top of the closet, not locked. At our Cinco de Mayo event, a grandmother visited her table with her grandchildren and took home a free gun cable lock for her firearm that was unsecured. I urge you to support the Secure Storage Ordinance to keep our community safe. And I will add, which was not as part of my speech, that this decision is not politically motivated. I am extremely passionate about gun control. I was born in Trumbull, Connecticut, next to Sandy Hook, where our classmate lost a mother in the Sandy Hook shooting. I lived in Northern Virginia. We're soon after leaving. I watched Virginia Tech massacre, and we lost a classmate, Rema Samaha. I am extremely passionate about gun safety, not gun control, and there is no way in my intention as a mother that this has any political motive except to keep our children and our community safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lois McNichol, followed by Mary Ann Rose, followed by Sarah Martin.
I don't know where to start. There are way too many laws already about guns in California. We are regulated to death. And as far as whether or not somebody is keeping their gun safe, a responsible gun owner will always do that. And no matter how many ordinances you pass, if that person is not a responsible gun owner, then they will not keep their guns locked up. And it doesn't matter if you have a Safe Secure Storage Act on file. And in fact, all you'll be doing is harassing the responsible gun owners that are already out there.
Thank you, Lois.
Mary Ann Rose, followed by Sarah Martin, followed by Shelley.
I know there's a lot of talk about having the safe storage where there are children involved, but I'd like to talk to the issue of whether it's no children involved. In approximately 2003, a former classmate of my daughter, who was a graduate of 2001, at least when they go 2001 graduating class, had been suffering from depression, finally couldn't take it anymore, and he shot himself with a gun, killed himself in front of his mother and his sister. A couple of years later, another graduate from a Little Centennial 2001 class was with his friends in a home, all adults, young adults messing around with the gun, and this young man accidentally killed himself with that gun. In 2007, our neighbor's 30-year-old son moved home. He was going through a terrible divorce, was very depressed, committed suicide with a gun. And most recently, my other daughter, who lived in the Bay Area for a little while, maintained a friendship with one of her friends she'd met up there. They were both studying to be a nurse, so this was a great bond for them. And so even though my daughter had moved back down here to go to nursing school, she and her friend continued a relationship because of their love, their desire to be nurses. They contacted each other a lot, and the last contact that my daughter had with her friend was Wednesday, and she told my daughter, "I asked my boyfriend to move out. He has moved out because he has not dealing with his mental health issues. He's not getting his life on track, and he's not being the supportive mate that I, the supportive partner I need." Well, that was the last my daughter heard from her, because Friday, that young man broke into her home and shot and killed her. Felt like I knew this girl from the stories my daughter told me about her, and I was so proud of her because she brought herself back from some really bad situations. So it's not just when there's children involved. You never know when there's a mental health issue going on in that home or a domestic abuse going on at home. And everything we can do, every little thing that we can do to try to create gun sense in America, which is what we're all about. And also, like I say, too, that we are also told that whenever we're out there advocating for this kind of stuff, that we have to make sure that we are not political at all. We can't say what party we're from, or we have to say apolitical on this, which I gotta say is hard for me, but I do stay apolitical because this is not a Democrat or an independent or Republican issue. This is an American issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Sarah Martin, followed by Shelley.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so Second Amendment, first of all, I wouldn't want the city to be open to potential lawsuits for violating those rights, okay? And for all the ladies here, I appreciate you, and I think 100% that guns should be secured and out of, not around children, okay? If there is an intruder that comes into our house and a potential person that might want to hurt our children, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna call 911, and how fast will the police?
Yeah, yeah, yes, point of order.
Excuse me? Okay, yeah. So how fast will it take for the police to show up, right? If there's an intruder in the house? Right? I think some of us have been through this before, all right? And can we defend our children if they come into our house? And if the ammo is separate from the guns, even if it's locked up, yeah, we can get into our safe. But if they're separate, our ability to defend ourselves and our families are dramatically decreased. So that's a concern. And yeah, basically, also, there's a huge civil liability, and ideally, most gun owners are extremely responsible and understand that they need to be responsible and keep things locked up. So with that, are we gonna have like a state where people can't even like manage their own homes and their own responsibilities? We have to have like a nanny state where other people are micromanaging us because we can't be responsible ourselves? So that's all. Yeah. Thank you for all your consideration, and I appreciate you all. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Final speaker is Shelley.
We already have state and federal law. I really don't understand why we're wasting our time with this. I mean, yes, it's a good topic. It's something everyone should be doing, blah, blah, blah. But again, we have state and federal law. What are we gonna, suddenly San Clemente is gonna get teams of police going door-to-door knocking on registered gun owners and saying, "Hey, let me check your gun. Make sure you got it in your little lockbox." And who are you gonna come after? Are you gonna check people that had an arrest? Are you gonna go after the ex-military person? Are you gonna go after the mom? Whose house are you? This is just a waste of time. It's a waste of time, just like we made California or San Clemente, we tried to make it a no-abortion state. It's a state and federal issue. We should not be wasting our time. We have enough things going on in this city that can actually need work, need lots of work. It's just, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our last comment.
That is our last speaker card, yes.
So we'll open it up then to a discussion by the City Council. And Chris, did you want to start at the end over here?
I think I'd let Councilmember Loeffler speak first.
I was gonna wait to see if anybody else had comments, because I might have answers to some of their comments or whatever. I mean, if nobody else wants to make a comment, I'll certainly feel free to start.
Anyone wanna comment first, or you wanna?
I'll start. I mean, it doesn't keep you from speaking afterwards.
You can still.
This was brought up by certain council members. Maybe they should address it and explain why it's on our agenda.
Absolutely. I would be fine with this. So let's go back and just clarify a few things that I've heard. I think, I don't believe that the residents made some comments, actually read the ordinance. I heard something about protecting yourself in your house and having to go find your ammo. This ordinance is very, very clear. You can have a gun inside your house. You can have it strapped to you. You can have four guns. You can have a bandolero, as long as you have control of the weapon. So that's completely off the ordinance that's here. Going back to the history of the ordinance, got some information from a group called Be Smart. I didn't know about the MOMS thing. The brochure I got said Be Smart on it, talked about protecting kids, safe, secure, all that. I thought, well, at least it's something to discuss. Brought to the council, got a second to send to the Public Safety Committee for a possible letter ordinance, whatever, to look at the ordinance and come back and see what they thought about it. Did go to the Public Safety Committee. I think there was some miscommunication in that while they were supposed to look at a proposed model of an ordinance, I thought the direction was to take a look at it and tweak it if you thought it could be done better. And I didn't have any communication with the Public Safety Committee until it came back and it said, "No, this ordinance is no good." I agree 100% with the Public Safety Committee. The model that we sent was not a good ordinance. I will tell you one reason why it's, or why, I'll go first. I'll tell you about, because we heard about, we have a California Penal Code that addressed this, so we don't need anything else. I do disagree with the Public Safety Committee said that it was a comprehensive municipal code that covered this. And I'll tell you why. City of Los Angeles adopted a similar ordinance to what we're looking at right now a few years ago. Why is that? Because in one of the arguments made to the city at the time why they should do more, the California Penal Code is deficient in two ways. It does not define what safe storage means when it mandates guns be stored safely. This has led to numerous deaths where a parent believes the gun to be safe in closet or top of a refrigerator, under a mattress, or even in a purse, but this is clearly not safe. True storage is where the firearm is stored in a DOJ-approved locked container or disabled trigger lock. Also, it does not apply to homes, only applies to homes where children live or where a child is likely to gain access to a firearm. This is too vague. Firearms in all homes should be securely locked or disabled with a device when not in control. And I'll tell you what our California Penal Code says. The person keeps any firearm within any premises that are under the person's custody or control, the person knows that, or reasonably should know, that a child is likely to gain access. So if I reasonably believe that my kid can't climb up four shelves on a bookcase, and I put it on top of that bookcase, I'm covered. Doesn't say anything about a locked storage. Just says we're reasonable. Some people are more reasonable than others. Sometimes you have to enact ordinances or laws to make people be reasonable. Top of a refrigerator, some person might be reasonable. I don't believe it's reasonable. It says, okay, or that the person prohibited from possessing a firearm, and I guess that means if you're on parole or you know somebody shouldn't have a gun, you have to also put it on top of a refrigerator. And that's basically it. That's basically it. If you think it's reasonable, then you're covered. I do not agree with that. That's why the City of Los Angeles and 80 other cities, I believe, in California have changed to an ordinance similar to the one that we are presenting. And that number is growing every day. And talk about the politics. Well, if you're gonna use the reason that somebody brings something forward, that they support Joe Biden, and that's your reason, your only reason for being against it, that's silly. Well, it's same silly as going by and bringing forth laws and making policies on what Donald Trump says. You throw both of those out. This is non-political. This is not a Second Amendment issue, period. There is nothing in the Second Amendment that addresses safe storage of firearms. And there's been numerous cities, again, Los Angeles and 70-some-odd other cities in this state have enacted ordinances. There's no lawsuits or anything going. I do know that the NRA did sue Seattle in 2019 over their safe gun storage, which was much more restrictive than ours, and was thrown out of court. Even the NRA says that there should be safe storage of weapons. What they have usually a problem with is when you start talking about separating ammunition and doing things more invasive that our ordinance does not have. You can, safe storage is putting your loaded gun in a safe or putting a trigger lock on there, which usually means you couldn't have ammunition anyway. So that's that part of it. We all think that kids shouldn't be able to get firearms. There's a million horror stories I could read. And let me go, I do have some personal interests. Matter of fact, some people have contacted the city and said I should recuse myself on this item. Why? Because I'm biased. I have a bias. I have no bias. I worked 37 years as a police officer. I have seen children killed by guns. I don't know if anybody else out there has seen that. Maybe, maybe our captain, you know, he was an investigator for a while. It's something that stays with you. I don't remember much about my police career, to tell you the truth. I remember a couple of things. I remember kids being killed, and I remember when somebody tried to ambush me, and I was lucky, I was trained better than they were, it was with a stolen gun. I can't tell you how many of my colleagues over 37 years were killed and killed with guns, and most often, it was the crook with the stolen gun. I don't know how he got, did he steal it from a gun store? I don't know. Were they all stolen from residents? I have no idea. I do believe that there's a strong possibility that many of those guns were just taken in a burglary where somebody, like everybody does or everybody used to, you have your gun in your dresser, you have your gun between your mattresses is a good one, under your pillow, but they just don't secure it when they leave the house. And that's where most crooks get their guns. It's exactly right. The DOJ reports between 250,000 and 350,000 guns a year are taken, and the reason that number is so varied is because they know around 250,000 are taken, but they believe there may be as many as 100,000 taken. People don't report. Why? Because they inherited it from their uncle, or, you know, they got somewhere, it's not registered, and you just don't want to mess with it, so they don't register it. So there's so many guns out there. So the kids is an important thing, but so is just the matter that we have so many guns in criminals' hands. So many guns in criminals' hands. Had somebody else told me, "When was the last time a kid got shot with a gun in San Clemente?" Well, hopefully, it's never happened, but San Clemente is not immune from anything that the state or this country is, and there's, again, the horror stories every day of kids being killed by guns, either self-inflicted, accidentally, or a homicide. Most of the time, it's accidental, curious kids playing with guns with each other. And why? Because they weren't secured. They weren't secured. The kids know where the guns are in the house. They're curious. They get them, and they play with them. We've got to do something about this, and this is not political whatsoever. It's not, it's not political. It's, okay, it's political to some people. I hope it's not political to most people. I hope you don't decide whether public safety is about Democrats or Republicans. And by the way, the bullet doesn't know the difference between a Republican and a Democrat. It's ridiculous. We have to take- We have to take action like the other cities have. This is not invasive. How do you enforce it? I love that question. And I'll ask my fellow councilman, we got three attorneys here. Do you think that drivers should be licensed to drive on the street in California? Do you believe that? Do you believe that you should have driver's license? How do you enforce that?
You could stop.
How do you proactively enforce that? Yes, it's always secondary. And how are these kind of laws enforced? Secondary, after something happens. Exactly like most laws are. It's after something happens. And our ordinance also covers the fact, even if you don't have your gun stored safely and it gets stolen, call the police and you're immune from any kind of prosecution if you have your gun stolen. So this idea of if somebody coming is going to break in or knock on your door and come in and look to see if your gun's safe, no. And I like the idea that, yes, and most of, I know some people out here, and I know you keep your guns safe, but you cannot count out fact that 300,000 guns a year get stolen and most of them are not stored safely. So apparently, it does not happen all the time. This ordinance is not going to do anything tomorrow when you wake up, or if it's passed, I should say, a gun owner is not going to be affected at all. I hope that if it does pass, there's article in San Clemente Times, maybe an article in Orange County Register that reminds people, this is something that you have to do. And if just one gun owner locks up their guns, that will be enough to make this worth it. Because right now, the way the law reads, you can put 15 guns on your couch, all loaded, leave the house, go on vacation, and that's perfectly fine. I don't think that's perfectly fine. I think as a responsible gun owner, you would want your guns locked up, not only for the safety, but just so you can keep them. And we do have guns stolen in San Clemente. Captain, correct me if I'm wrong, there's guns stolen every month in San Clemente. Not that many luckily, because I do believe we keep them safe and San Clemente is a safe community, but it does happen. But I'll also add another thing. The worst, the worst job on being a police officer I found was going and making a notification that somebody's son, daughter, mother, husband, brother was murdered. That's one of the things yet. Has anybody out there had to do? Well, I know there's a couple of people who had to do it. And I don't think that they would disagree that that's the most distasteful and even the worst. It's when you go to a police officer's wife, now widow, and say, your husband has been shot and killed on duty. And I don't think that when that happens, I've never had anybody ask, well, was the gun secured? But I don't think in that, if they would know that the gun wasn't secured, it wouldn't be, well, my husband got shot and he's killed, but I'm sure glad that gun owner didn't have to put, you know, the one that the person stole it from, that gun owner didn't have to put that in, you know, secure it, put it in a safe. I don't think I'd hear that. So I appreciate everybody that's made comments on this. I'm more connected to it than probably anybody in the audience, but I have to tell you, what I didn't hear up here, I heard some good stories about people who had problems with guns and families that were destroyed. And trust me, your family's going to be destroyed if any family member is shot and killed, period. It's never going to come back. But what I didn't hear is any stories of anybody come up and say, yeah, I had, I had my son shot and killed by a gun and, but you know what? Whether it was stored or not, that's really not important. It would be important if you knew that your son or daughter was shot and killed with a gun, that some irresponsible gun owner just left around, was stolen, and the criminal used it. This is not invasive. This is sending the message like other cities have. Oh, and by the way, oh, political? There's no more state more conservative than Utah, and they're putting together legislation right now, state legislation to close this loophole on safe storage. And what are they using for a model? They're using the Department of Justice model for gun storage, which mirrors ours almost completely. So I don't want to hear about politics. I said, I don't want to hear about politics. You had your chance to speak. I didn't speak over you, right? So, anyway, I asked my fellow council members to look beyond politics. This is to keep people safe, to keep guns secure, and keep guns out of the hands of criminals. That's it. It's not a statement on the Second Amendment.
All right. Yes.
Well, there was a reason I wanted to allow Councilmember Lefler to speak. Because I think he's the best suited on council to speak to this as a career law enforcement officer, and I know we have a few out there, too. I'm not going to repeat, you know, some of the details about the ordinance. I think he made it clear it doesn't apply to ammunition. It's about keeping, and it does allow gun owners to keep, to keep an unlocked firearm within their span of control, right? So that satisfies that issue of the burglar breaking in or the person breaking in and threatening your family. It only applies when it's not in your control or when you're out of the house. So I think I would defer to Councilmember Lefler's experience. I want to commend him for his bravery of taking on a difficult public safety issue. This is not a gun issue, it's public safety issue. And facing down a lot of the, a lot of the criticism about it, because this is an issue that really does touch people. And I think, hey, we want to hear from people all over, all over the record on this with different perspectives, but I feel compelled to support this because of the strong arguments that Councilmember Lefler said. And I think I'd sort of close with just saying, if this policy, which I think strikes a nice balance between maintaining people's ability to protect themselves with their firearms and also protecting public safety, if it, if it saves one child, one mentally ill person in distress, or one police officer, just one, it's worth passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I also want to commend you, Councilmember Lefler, that you did a wonderful job presenting why this is so important and why it is so necessary. One small thing I would like to add, if you're open to it, is that on page four, you have, it's the fourth whereas down. This is where our firearm really a destiny United States are the second leading cause of injury related deaths in children between the ages of one and 17. It is now, in the last year, have gone up to the number one killer of, number one cause of injury related deaths in the United States for children under the age of 17. So you're open to that small amendment. That's according to the CDC.
Yeah, as long as we can verify that, I think, I think being accurate is a good idea.
I'd just like to add a couple of statistics, and then I'll give a short, just personal account. Within this year alone, there have been 55 mass shootings in the United States, 11 of which just in this last week, two in California. In this year alone, since January 1st, 5,000 people have been killed in the United States by gun violence. That's in just this year. There's more statistics. Another one, United States is four times higher to have, four times more likely to have gun violence and incidents in, in high earning countries. The next one below us is Saudi Arabia. So there are more statistics like this that we can go on and on about, but I think for me, about a decade ago, I had a student, wonderful bright girl, she was, had her as her sophomore, and then her junior year, she was watching her younger brother. And she was babysitting. Her younger brother found some bullets that her parents hadn't stowed away correctly. And he was playing with them and threw them into a fireplace to see what would happen. The shrapnel came back and hit her in the eye and she lost her eye. Thankfully, nothing else happened. Thankfully, she was alive. Her brother also received some shrapnel as well, but he was okay. That could have gone a lot worse. But I think if there was an ordinance like this, where gun owners stored their, their guns, stored their bullets correctly, that incident would have happened. So I commend you for bringing this up, and yeah, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. City attorney, there were several comments this evening about state and federal preemption. Is the preemption of this ordinance a concern for the city of San Clemente?
It's a possibility, yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
It's potentially an issue if the ordinance passes.
So if we, if the city, let's say, were sued on this issue for state preemption, there's a chance that they would prevail?
There is a chance.
Significant chance?
I can't really venture to guess.
City attorney has.
Let him finish his line of questions.
Yeah, that's the only question I had for the city attorney. I do have a comment when the time comes.
Just a follow up question. Has any city who's passed an ordinance like this, have they been gone into, have they gone to litigation at all on this issue yet?
I believe that to be the case. I can't tell you what the outcomes have been, but there has been litigation around.
On the preempt.
Gun laws, yes.
All right.
Well, let me, let me just say, if I could, you know, Rick, I appreciate your comments, your emotion and the experience that you've had as a police officer for 35 years. You know, death by any means, gun or poison or any other way is a terrible thing. And guns do kill people. They're designed to inflict maximum damage, and they're quite effective at the purpose for which they're intended. We're dealing with a municipal law here to control storage, safe storage, but all the examples, particularly the most emotional examples that we heard this evening, didn't deal with firearms that were, you know, not safely maintained mostly. They were weapons that were stolen. And if you had a safe box, a lock, a chain key around the weapon, as the state law requires when it's not, to be properly secured, when it's not in use, those things wouldn't prevent any of the multiple weapons that are stolen every week and then used for nefarious purposes. People, to say people might die, or children might die, examples may of the CDC saying, well, the top cause of death up to kids up to age 17, well, that's gang related. That's not infants in homes. That's not a safety issue. That's primarily gang related. The CDC also reports that, that simple things like household poisoning kills an average of two people a day, 700 a year. And I think we heard testimony that one, one child was killed per year generally because of the safety related issues. And this isn't a political issue, but it is a freedom issue. And our constitution, when it described the Second Amendment, the Second Amendment has been under attack, not political, Democrat, Republican, but the freedom that our founding fathers recognized was imperative to keep a people free from the tyranny of their own government. And we've seen over the last number of decades, the escalation, the baby steps toward complete control of weapons. I think the safety is important, and I think, but I think that the ability of our citizens to quickly and easily access weapons for self defense is important. And I just don't think that because of state issues and freedom issues on the Second Amendment that this ordinance isn't necessary. Unfortunately, I won't be supporting it.
All right. I'll go next. I just want to say, I respect your views. I respect the views of the people that are here that are in support of gun safety and their description of the various incidents that have occurred and the national statistics that exist out there. They're heartbreaking. And people that do not secure their guns and take the utmost care are responsible for that. I look back and I try and look at, you know, what this impact has on San Clemente residents and whether I can make a judgment whether or not San Clemente residents are responsible gun owners. And I draw the conclusion that they are, that a lot of the problems that are described are from cities, other cities outside, I mean, LA, San Francisco, across the country. We just don't have the same problems here. And that gives me great concern for two reasons. One is we have a Second Amendment, and that Second Amendment protects the right of gun owners. And in order to offend that Second Amendment, we have to demonstrate, and I'm going to talk about it in legal words, that we are choosing, when we're acting as a state or as a city government, the least restrictive way of achieving that goal that we're trying to achieve. And we have to have a compelling state reason to do that. And we have to demonstrate what that compelling state reason is and how it impacts us here in San Clemente, in my view. I don't think we've done that. I don't think we've built the record that's needed in order to demonstrate that there's an issue here in San Clemente that can be fixed through this regulation. So I think it fails because it's preempted by our Second Amendment. I also think that it's preempted by state law. State law has chosen to take this area and build a state remedy for addressing this. And by enacting laws that require you to safely store those guns when you have children around, they've taken action on this, and they have preempted us from taking action on this as a city, in my view, again. Those two things, those two rationales, legal rationales, in my view, are what compel me to say that we don't have the authority here in this body to preempt either the federal or the state law through an ordinance. The third is, we've sent this out to our Public Safety Committee, which are the experts, our chief, our sheriff, all the other people that volunteer their time and effort to review these ordinances, make decisions, and give us their best recommendation based on the years of experience they have in law enforcement and in other areas of public safety. And their recommendation is not to, to support this. And lastly, I would say, I had a conversation with our sheriff about how this would be enforced or whether he could even enforce it. I think you mentioned it, they can't really enforce it until after the fact. And in those circumstances, if you look at what really happens in those circumstances, if it is a stolen gun, it is, you know, or it's a parent that violated the law, the parents probably aren't going to be charged only because of the circumstance. There's a lot of things that go into that analysis. But it is one of those areas where there is great emotion on both sides. There isn't a right answer, there isn't a wrong answer, in my view. I tend to look at the law and where the law stands. I think this opens us up to unneeded litigation and costs. Maybe not, hopefully, nobody sues us, but I think if they do, we will lose that case and bear enormous legal costs in defending the case. And so for those reasons, I can't support it, even though I support the concept of educating everybody. And maybe, maybe if we've at least educated some people tonight about gun safety, or if the ordinance passes, you know, maybe we'll have more people educated on it. But those are my views on the issue.
I just made a couple more comments. Yeah, and I don't want to lay this on the Public Safety Committee like they, we're not, if it passes, this isn't what they said we shouldn't. It's a completely different document. So again, and on the Second Amendment, you know, I, the Second Amendment that we all rely on for our right to bear arms, when that was written, it took, it took a minute to stick a ball in a hole and tamp it down. You know, I don't think our founding fathers really could envision guns that we have now. And, you know, Second Amendment's been altered. It used to be you could own a Thompson machine gun up to a certain point, and now you can't. Well, why not? I mean, it's a gun, but they've decided, no, federal law prohibits you from owning one unless you're a federal firearm dude or whatever. But so. But, so I think even Jefferson said, to look at the Constitution like it should never be changed is like looking at a child and expecting him to wear the same coat all of his life. Things change. And we're not even changing the Second Amendment. You still have the right to go and buy any guns you want to, have as many as you want to. You just have to store them safely when you don't have control of them. It just, I think it's a simple thing and getting wound up in the concept of this Constitution, all of a sudden they're, you know, this is a stepping stone. And Steve, I'll, I'll tell you, I, when I was first on the police department in 1974, I had an old detective come up to me, and he was probably in World War II, that's how long ago that was, and he said, kid, in five years, you're not even going to be able to carry that gun. And it was a Smith and Wesson six shooter, by the way. I go, what do you mean? He goes, yeah, they're changing the laws, they're going to come and take our guns. You won't be carrying a gun, nobody allowed to be, and I actually go, wow, that, that might be a thing. And here it is 50 years later, and, and I thought it was true, and I've always heard about they're coming to take our guns, and I don't know who that "they" was, but we still have our guns. So I-
Careful, you're aging yourself with your-
I know, I know. So anyway, I think, I understand what you're saying, but I think we're safe on that because if somebody was in here bringing up a resolution to do anything to restrict, restrict our buying, possession, possessing guns, CCW, or carrying that CCW into a public place, I would be the first one to jump all over that, Steve. And I might have people up here who disagree with that, but I'm all over that. So I, I like to think that we can keep that from happening. To me, this is just perfectly a, a safety issue that makes sense. And that's it. And like, like Victor said, there is no right answer on this. But I, to me, this one is more right.
Well, regarding the Second Amendment, there are people who want to take away guns away. People say it openly, verbally, loudly, all day long in our political process. We're not talking about politics, but we're talking about the Second Amendment. And Rick, you're right, the, you know, in Jefferson's day, it took a minute or so for a fast loader to load a long rifle. But, which emphasizes the point that it's quick today and the need for an access to a weapon for self-defense is just as quick. And by locking ammunition in storage separately or in a quote "safe, safe arena," could make that weapon not very available when it's needed. So, you know, the-
Well, again, I don't, I don't understand that premise. You can, you can have the gun. You can have it on your nightstand. You can have it in close proximity to you. You don't have to take it out of a safe. You can have it with you.
Well, the, the point is, and I don't want to be repetitious, but the point is that one more restriction in the freedom to carry and have access to weapons of protection is, to me, vitally important. And without going on, I won't say anymore, but that's why I can't support this ordinance.
Did anyone have any other questions so far? Adam, oh, you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I was going to make a motion. Sorry.
All right, we'll accept the motion.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I'd just say, the reason I make the motion is, the idea that we have to wait until a child is shot or someone commits suicide or, you know, or God forbid, one of our deputies is shot before we do something, that's, that strikes me as the opposite of what we should do. We should set the standard ahead of time of what we, we expect of our, of our local residents. And I, I think that this ordinance is entirely consistent with the Second Amendment and state law. It just provides more clarity about how we can safely keep and bear arms. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 1773 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Amending Chapter 9.04, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency of the San Clemente Municipal Code, to Add New Section 9.04.045 Relating to Safe Storage of Firearms and Finding the Ordinance Not Subject to the California Environmental Quality Act."
And as a strong supporter of the Second Amendment, I will second that.
All right. Thank you.
And I'd add, with, with the, with the revision mentioned by Councilmember Enmeyer, if it's established that it is in fact the number one cause of death.
Councilmember Duncan, I did have a chance, Mayor, if I may-
Sure.
-to review the CDC's statistics for 2022. So if it pleases the council, if you want to change the Fourth Whereas Clause, to be consistent with that, it would say, according to the CDC, in 2022, firearm-related deaths in the United States are the leading cause of injury-related deaths in children between the ages of one and 17.
Okay, I'll accept that revision as part of my motion.
And the second, you'll accept it too?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, just a quick discussion on the motion. Since the motion contained a preamble, again, talking about beneath the terrible thing that it is that one person would die, a child would die or anything would die, no question, death is a terrible thing, however it happens. Our constitution didn't contain a provision to prevent and protect against the po- Our constitution didn't contain a provision to protect against the poisoning of individuals when one person dies. Two people die every day, children, from poisoning. We're not talking about restricting and locking up underneath the kitchen cabinet to make sure that kids don't have access to poison. We're not talking about the protection for poisoning. We're talking about the protection for the use and, and freedom, freedom of firearms. So with that, I'll vote no.
Well, we're still, whatever. Discussing, I think.
That was, you asked for a vote, it was a motion and a second. I was-
There could be debate on it.
I was, he preempted his motion, I'm preempting my vote, but-
Okay, all right.
I would just counter that, that we do have laws and child mechanisms so that kids can't get into chemicals and other things, and we put those laws in place so that children would not die of poison. So, and with that, are we taking a vote or?
Well, I, I wanted to give people, I do-
I've said my piece.
Call for the, call for the question.
I'll just finish up. I do believe we're going to get ourselves into legal trouble. I mean, maybe it's the risk we take. Hopefully, we will, we will not get sued on this. I think we open ourselves certainly to litigation and expensive litigation to defend this, this law, because in my view, it's unconstitutional, it's preempted by federal and state law. And again, I can only hope that we don't get sued. I do agree, though, you know, you have the right to, you know, try and take whatever methods you want to protect the life. I think, I have enough belief in the people of San Clemente that they are going to do whatever is necessary to lock their guns. I think, you know, just looking, if we don't look at all the statistics across the country, if we just looked at San Clemente, I haven't seen that issue, that problem here with, with guns in San Clemente. I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. And we're legislating for stats and information that are relevant to Baltimore and to Detroit and to other cities, but not San Clemente. And so I am going to stay with my position that I'm opposed to this, this law.
Okay. Call for the question.
All right.
I.
I.
No.
I.
I'm a no. And, and thank you for the, the debate on this. And, and as I said, you know, we don't always agree here, but I respect all of your opinions.
Can you announce the, the result of the, of the motion for, just for the folks here?
Yes.
Sure. The vote was 3-2 to introduce the ordinance with Mayor Cabral and Councilmember No Block voting no.
And the others voting yes.
Yes, it's 3-2.
So the motion passed.
Yes, the motion passed, exactly.
That's what I was asking for.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda.
Consideration, this is item 9B, consideration of reestablishing sand compatibility and opportunistic use program SCOOP in San Clemente.
All right, do we have a staff?
Yes, Lesleya Meyerhoff is approaching.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Lesleya Meyerhoff, Coastal Administrator for San Clemente. I did not prepare a PowerPoint for you this evening, but I do have an overview of the program for you. And of course, I'd be happy to take any questions at the end of my, my presentation. This item is before you for direction to staff, and the item is the SCOOP program or sand compatibility and opportunistic use program. Effectively, what SCOOP is, is an additional means of getting sand to the city's beaches. I would contrast this with the Army Corps project, which is a planned project with a, a borrow site, and the issues with the current borrow site notwithstanding, most projects rely on a known source of sand for a duration of time. The difference with SCOOP is that we're looking at opportunistically available sources, such as sediment that comes out of the Santa Ana River. You could include things like excavation from a construction site where there's an export volume of material that is determined to be compatible with the beach. You could also use sediments from, let's say, landslide material that has fallen onto the slope that can be placed on the beach if it's compatible and free of debris, et cetera. So the, the program is really opportunistic in nature, but it is another important tool to have in the toolbox, and quite a few cities and counties have them in California, so it's certainly worth exploring. And this item is before you because the city has had a SCOOP program in place in the past. At this time, though, all the permits have expired, so we would be taking information from the previous SCOOP program, which included two opportunistic sand placement projects at North Beach, and both of those utilized material from the Santa Ana River. So in, in contemplating a new SCOOP program or a reimagined SCOOP program, we would define the program. And that would entail determining which beaches would be the priorities, how much material the beaches could receive. We would look at any other constraints, such as biological resources constraints or any other kind of physical access constraints. So we would define a program, and then we would conduct environmental review of that program. And then while we're conducting environmental review, we would prepare regulatory permit applications with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Their regulatory branch would require a permit. California Coastal Commission would require a permit. The Regional Water Quality Control Board would require a permit. The California State Lands Commission would require a land lease. And then we anticipate likely some kind of approval, like a right-of-entry or right-of-way permit with the railroad entities. So SCOOP is really defining a program, conducting environmental review, and then getting the permits in place so that when opportunistically available material becomes available, we have already done all the environmental and permitting to receive that, that sand, so we can be first in line to get that sand. That really concludes my presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I just, we've been pursuing this on a dual track for, oh, wait a second. We have some comments now? Did we have some before?
Yes, I was just waiting for Rick.
We typically would ask questions and then leave comments, so you're-
Yeah. We've been pursuing this on a dual track for some time now, both with Orange County and on our own, for several months. But it's, you might want to explain a little bit more about the cost and the permitting problem, how many different agencies, and why it's, it's not like just going in and applying for your license and coming out with a license the same day. There's, as you mentioned, several agencies, and some of them take a long time, and we're in that process.
Yes. So the, the parallel path you're referring to is the County of Orange has started their own county-wide SCOOP program in which the city beaches are also included. So we would be potential beneficiary of a county SCOOP program. And none of that changes if the city develops its own SCOOP program. We might be somewhat lower priority, but we would still be included in their program. The, the permits are a little bit of a wild card in terms of how long it takes for the agencies to get through their process and get to the approval point. So this program, I'm estimating could be completed in anywhere from a year to 18 months to maybe two years, depending on how quickly we can get the agencies to react and respond to our, our permit applications.
And the cost?
The cost is, is unknown really at this time. We're putting an estimate in the staff report of 250,000 to 400,000, and that would be for hiring consultants to do the environmental review and obtain the permits.
All right. Thank you. Any other, yes?
Thanks, thanks, Lesleya, for the, the tour through the bureaucracy of getting something done that I think seems entirely common sense. That's a larger issue that we'll have more discussions on, I think, moving forward. One piece of this, of the process that you didn't touch on specifically was the location where the borrow site, I guess for lack of a better word, would be, right? So you talked about that throughout this process, we would identify the beaches, where we would want to place the sand, and get all the necessary permits from, from whatever entities are involved for that location. In terms of the borrow site, is that, would that be part of this process too, in terms of identifying where potentially the sand may come from, the sediment, if, you know, inland sand or wherever, riverbeds and those kind of things? Is that also part of this process?
Yes, that would be one of the first tasks, is we would look at really the universe of potentially available sediment sources, like the Santa Ana River, like other dams, potentially like detention basins and other city facilities where we are cleaning them out on a regular basis, and there's sediment that should end up on the beach but hasn't for, for whatever reason. So we would take those opportunities. So really, we'd be looking at a very broad range of opportunities. And, and that's kind of the distinction between SCOOP and a planned project, like a regional beach sand project, where you know exactly where you're going to get your source. This just enables the city to receive opportunistically available sediment sources as they, as they come forward. And in fact, we, we received an email from someone in like the Palm Springs area saying they had, you know, millions and millions of cubic yards of sand to sell the city. We would just have to pay the trucking costs. And so there's a lot of sand sources out there, and so we would enumerate all of those, estimate quantities, availability, and build that into our program.
Okay, perfect. And understood. Is that, that, is that type of a task? I know that you would be working on that and presumably potentially other staff or consultants. Is that something that our, like, our Coastal Advisory Committee might be good at doing, right? As a, as a project, we're going to get to that later in the agenda, but I'm kind of wondering, you know, that's kind of a big task, right? That's not as defined as identifying the area on the beach. That's kind of more, wow, this could be almost anywhere. You think that's a project that, that, that committee might be able to work on as one of the things that are, that's, that's part of their work plan?
Yeah, absolutely. I think they could be useful in helping to define the universe of sediment sources that are out there and coming up with the quantity estimates and providing some technical detail on that.
Okay. So that might be something we would consider giving their direction on? Okay. All right, that's all.
Question? Lesleya, the, does the SCOOP permit limit the number of cubic yards of sand that we can request? Or can you leave it open-ended for whatever the opportunity is?
In my experience, the agencies want you to give a maximum cubic yards per year. So previously, for example, the city had 300,000 cubic yards that was allowed in the city. So it really just depends on the number of beaches that are included in the program and environmental constraints that would constrain-
And as Chris said, we can ask our coastal committee to opine on that. But how, I guess, how do we know? We could use, in my, in my opinion, 500,000 cubic yards, 750,000 cubic yards in North Beach and allow that sand to move south. Are we, why, how are we restricted by asking for a very, very large number? When we applied four years, four years ago, five, back in, what, 2016, we only asked for, you know, 12,000 cubic yards, which is a splash. How do we get the maximum without, I mean, if we have to identify a number, can't we just say a very, 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 very large number?
Yes, you could, and it depends on how you define your program and what type of environmental documentation you want to provide. So if you end up with a, let's say, a really sizable project, let's say, like, like the Army Corps project size, you end up with an environmental impact report as opposed to a lesser type of environmental document. So that plays into the cost, that plays into the duration of time it takes to get to the point where you can actually- to the point where you can actually receive the sand. So, all of those would be good considerations for discussion as we, you know, if the council directs move forward with this topic.
And the borrow locations need to be identified as well.
The borrow locations would need to be identified as well.
Yeah. One of the directors of the Orange County Water District recently told me that they have unlimited sand at Prado Dam, that's beach-quality sand that they would love to ship to us on rail cars. I tried to get a number from him, and he just said, "It's huge." It's, he didn't say infinite, but he said, "It's very, very, very large." And I guess I would like to be able to take advantage of that, and I just want to make sure we don't tie our own hands by asking for a small amount.
I agree. We'd want to optimize the size of the program and include delivery via truck and via rail.
And locations as well. One last question. Can this be, is this easily extended beyond five years, if, once we're granted this SCOOP permit?
Yes. We're starting to see the permits now for 10 years, and in some cases, 20 years.
So, our request would be 10 years?
I would start with a 10-year.
Great. Great. Thank you.
One question for you. Supposing that we receive the SCOOP permit, what would be the cost to the city in terms of shipping that sand to our beaches?
Sure. So, the cost varies by the distance of the source site to the beach. I've seen those end up being negotiations. So, if a, let's say, let's say, an inland developer has a source of sediment that they are not needing, and the city's interested in taking it, you would then negotiate who pays the cost to get it delivered to the city, who pays the trucking costs, who pays the pre-construction monitoring, the sampling? All of those tasks have a price tag associated with them, so that would be something you could certainly work through as you define your program.
In general, is it the cities who pay for this, or is there grant funding from state, federal sources, county sources?
In my experience, the actual implementation of SCOOP programs comes down to a combination of the cities and the entities generating the source material.
And at this point, city manager, would we have resources to fund those ventures going forward?
It would be, it would depend on the side of the venture, right? If it's a large, if it's a large venture, of course, we might have to look at some different revenue generation. If it is smaller, or if there is a site where they are more anxious to get rid of the sand, you know, that sand will certainly be cheaper.
Quick question, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, Leslia, and you mentioned that the monies would come from, obviously, the city and from the source that needs to get rid of the sand. In our situation, we've got slow movements impacting the rails. TCA spent millions securing the rails, dropping riprap to keep the rails from moving. Would our SCOOP application contain any kind of request of OCTA to contribute toward that effort, toward our effort to stabilize the rail, the rail system, before it's ultimately decided on what they do with the rail system?
We could certainly work with them as a partner agency, and we are, in fact, you know, having conversations with them on an ongoing basis regarding their coastal resiliency plan and the needs of the city.
We will then open it up.
Hear the speakers? Okay. I will call the first three speakers. Susan Ambrose, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Susie Whitelaw.
Good evening, city council members. Nice to see you tonight. I want to compliment Leslia on a great report that she just gave, and I'd also like to thank Andy, city manager, for these agenda reports, because I'm going to use some of those right now as I talk very briefly. When we're talking about the consideration of re-establishing a sand compatibility and opportunistic use program, otherwise known as SCOOP, in San Clemente, I see that as a definite opportunity to show our community and our state and the federal government that we are willing to look at our economic vitality and the economics of our city when we're investing in putting in a program like this. This is, the SCOOP program will help us ensure finding resources that have sand. So, when we, this will help greatly eliminate a lot of the erosion by getting more sand and sediment in places. And some of the research that has been done by some of your other consultants, on hotspots, for example, the identification there, so you can have a measurement there as well. So, I would recommend to you, as a coastal advisory committee member and a resident, a longtime resident of San Clemente, that you actually put this into movement right now, move this further and farther down, and ask Leslia to proceed with this project. Thank you very much. Now, I was going to do the one, two, threes here. Do you want me to come back and do my minutes after two and after three?
What are you going to do? You're still on your time.
I am supporting all of B, C, and D.
You got to dress, hold on, you got to dress me.
Oh, I thought it was just.
She's looking at everybody.
Everybody. So, yes.
On the consent calendar?
No, no, no. You should come back and speak when we get to C and D.
Thank you very much. Will do.
Next speaker is Lois McNichol.
Hi. Well, I did go back, and actually, I read all of the staff recommendations on all these little agenda items. And one of the things that I was a little concerned about is that she was reluctant to talk about the price. And she did come up with a number of 250,000, but that's just where it starts. It goes to 400,000. Now, and also, the staff recommendations, which we are always being so proud of our staff here, so, they vary on this particular item. They can go anywhere from, well, you need to actually have the citizens have more input, or simply provide input to CAC, or maybe, you don't know, you need to do anything at all.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Susie Whitelaw, followed by Concerned Resident, followed by Amanda.
Hi. Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches San Clemente, and I am here tonight to encourage the council to vote yes on applying for the SCOOP permit. Next slide. Starting at the north, these are the beaches that need sand and that aren't going to get it from the federal project. So, it's Shorecliffs, they've had a lot of erosion, next. Capo Shore is way at the end, you can't really get a picture of it because you can't get on their beach unless it's a really extremely low tide. Next slide. Two weeks ago, I was showing you erosion at the concession stand at North Beach, and now you can actually stand underneath the concession stand. They need sand really bad. Next slide. Calafia has no dry sand left. Next slide. And we all know what the south end looks like. People apparently in Maryland and Michigan know what our beach looks like. The map on the right-hand side, the purple and the blue are the sections of the coastline that have been completely armored, like shown in the photograph. The red has now been about halfway armored, and the yellow, the orange is the whole state beach. And that's going to go very quickly unless we can get some sand down there and hopefully convince OCTA to help us in that effort. Next slide. So, bringing in sand from inland is called opportunistic, and we have at least two sources of free sand that I know about. One is the Santa Ana River, where the Capo Beach got their sand from last year, and the next is Prado Dam, as Councilmember Noblock said. That's up by Corona. It's got a whole lot of free sand. They literally, it's about 200,000 cubic yards that they have to remove in the next five years, and there's a lot more that they can remove. It's about 90% filled. It's no longer functioning as a good flood control dam. So, this can be trucked in, as shown here, and what happened in Capo Beach. Or, next slide, you could transport it via rail. And Save Our Beaches has been looking at this. Other consultants, including GHD and Moffett and Nichol, have been looking at this. Orange County Department of Public Works and Orange County Parks have all been looking at this. It's less expensive. It's about half as expensive as trucking, and it's got fewer environmental impacts. Prado Dam is right next to the rail line, and so, there's areas where you can load up the rail cars. I think it's about 40 miles down here, and we can dump it, on most of these beaches, we can dump it just right on the beach. We don't need trucks involved at all, just some dozers in on the beach, or even just let Mother Nature spread it around once it is on the beach. Next slide. In any case, for any of these options, we need a SCOOP permit first. I'm really glad that we've got Leslia here, who knows all about that. For $250,000, it must be a real, just maze of legalities. I can't even begin to imagine it.
Thank you very much.
Let's do it.
Your comments.
Concerned Resident, followed by Amanda.
All the years I've been coming here and listening to sand, I have to applaud Ms. Whitelaw. It's the first time north, what? It's the first time I've heard north Pochi Beach. San Clemente beaches do not start at North Beach. They start at Pochi Beach. That beach is gone. She actually showed you a photograph, which I wish I had brought, of what's happened in front of the Shorecliffs Beach Club. Now, I know you all don't think much of Shorecliffs, but anyway, why, why, and thank God, Runse will be in my district. Why are we not addressing the northernmost part of our town? It makes no sense to me. I mean, I think we all pay the same taxes. I think we all deserve the same consideration. And just to record-keeping, I am so apologetic that when I showed my slides earlier, I neglected to say those are all taken during weekend play in San Gregorio. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the final speaker is Amanda.
Amanda? Is she here?
Yeah. She's there. But she's.
So, I'm glad that the SCOOP program is being reactivated. This is something that former coastal advisor committee member Susan Ambrose has been mentioning for a couple of years now, when the coastal advisor committee disbanded last time. So, she's been mentioning that for quite some time. So, I wanted to make that clarification. I want to address the big elephant in the room, hopefully. I think Aaron Washington had to step out of the room because there were four members of the coastal advisory committee members here. So, that is a quorum. So, I know this has happened before, and I'm really concerned about that because I don't see people from BPNR, from the Human Affairs Committee, or any, or the Planning Commission, doing that. So, I hope that someone addresses that matter because, you know, I wouldn't want this to be happening, you know, for other committees and commissions to do that, and I hope that someone addresses if this is a potential Brown Act violation. I could submit a point of order card, but I think I just made my, you know, my comments perfectly clear. I appreciate everybody's comments. However, what's the purpose of having a coastal advisor committee when we have Leslia presenting the same thing? And is it coast, and the concern is also, is the coastal advisor committee, there's several people that are directors of the Save Our Beaches who are on the coastal advisor committee. So, there's a concern of conflicts of interest, and so, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for bringing this permitting process back again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I think our city manager is looking into that. We're done?
No more public comments, yes.
Leslia, could I ask you just a couple more clarifications, just for the public? I think the photo of the missing sand underneath the, one of our facilities is an old photo, and we put sand back at that location.
The North Beach.
The North Beach, yeah. Is that, is that correct?
Are you asking if that is a current photo?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it is, actually, maybe a couple of weeks ago.
Let me ask Andy. Andy, maybe?
We did fill underneath. There will be some continuing scouring until we get the south swell again, but we did fill it back in, and then we will just continue to watch it until we get the south swell back.
This past week. The other thing is, we talked, there's been some discussion about free sand, and I just want to clarify, it's free sand, but we got to pay the transportation costs here, which are, just for the public's knowledge, that could be expensive. What are we looking at in terms of the cost of moving sand, either by truck or rail?
Well, it really varies, again, according to the distance of the material to the site. So, for example, when we heard from the folks in Palm Springs, they were offering it to the city, I think, at $75 a cubic yard, 75 or $80? 74? Okay, thank you. We've seen, we've saw an estimate that OCTA had prepared, I think it was 15,000 cubic yards that they could deliver via rail, and the price tag on that was about $375,000.
Okay.
So, the costs really are going to vary. Again, you're going to want, a local source is going to be a better source because it'll be a lower-cost source.
And are there complications with using the rails for sand delivery?
Well, I think.
Presuming that the trains are running.
Yes. I think it's just, it's a negotiation and a coordination with our regional partner, OCTA.
Okay.
And I'm sure this has been addressed before. This is for Lesia and Andy. This is the county that we're getting the SCOOP permit from?
So.
I'm asking Andy.
So, yeah, Orange County is, at the same time, looking to get a SCOOP permit that would cover all of the coastal cities in Orange County. We are moving ahead of that. We want to move at a faster pace. Not only that, I hope that by having our own SCOOP permit, hopefully, we can be maybe a little bit more aggressive and maybe maneuver just a little bit quicker and more nimble and get the sand more quickly on our beaches.
Is there any emergency contingency for speeding up the permit process?
I don't think so for a SCOOP permit. The SCOOP permit is a process, it's a program, and so, a series of permits that we go through. So, I don't know that that would apply for an emergency permit.
Hold on, we can't have comments from the public right now.
No, but I did hear something about Katrina Foley, who's a county supervisor. So, is there any way through the county supervisors that we might be able to get some expedited?
We can explore that. Absolutely. We're willing to explore it.
Well, I mean, what happened at Capo Beach, Leslia, where actually Katrina Foley was able to very quickly get some sand deposited at that beach, it didn't seem like they went through any kind of regulatory process?
I did speak with OC Park's staff, who was involved in that project, and they were able to get the approvals in place in about four to five months. So, much quicker, much quicker, but, and it was pursued as an emergency because they were losing the parking lot there and some of the critical public infrastructure. So, just like with OCTA taking emergency actions, cities can take emergency actions to protect critical public infrastructure, too. So, that's something, you know, it does remain an option to the city.
Okay. And I think we're all asking the same thing. Let's pursue the emergency angle if we can. Any other questions down here? All right. All right, well.
I'm going to make a motion, if it's appropriate, to that we instruct the, we direct the coastal administrator to proceed with the SCOOP permit with the largest possible parameters.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? Okay. Any further discussion, debate? All right. The question's been called, so.
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, C.
And that item carried 5-0. That was a motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Councilmember Duncan.
And it was unanimous?
Yes. And the next item is item 9C, request to introduce an ordinance modifying the coastal advisory committee meeting schedule and consideration of ad hoc subcommittees, excuse me.
Andy, that's your presentation?
Yes. Mayor and council, first, we want to recognize the presence of some of our coastal advisory committee members. They do a great job. As you know, they are talented, and they bring a lot to the table. They have helped our effort in trying to bring sand to our beaches. They have helped our effort in trying to bring sand to our beaches. There has been a request to have that committee rather than meet bimonthly, which is what was originally intended by the city council, which is consistent with most of our committees. There's been a request to have the coastal advisory committee meet monthly and to also be able to form ad hoc committees to take on certain specific tasks. The biggest impact, of course, for us is the limitations on staff. As you know, we spend a lot of time preparing for this meeting every other week, and then, for instance, in community development, they have six other commissions and committees that they have to prepare for. So they're just, there becomes staff limitations on how much time we can spend on preparing for committee meetings and whatnot. So the biggest concern I would have is simply having the staff resources to be able to staff a committee meeting on a monthly basis. There have been other requests, as you know, by other committees that would like to meet on a monthly basis too. But the council at this point has always, for the most part, has kept those bimonthly. There was an issue raised, which was the other issue I was going to, which you had mentioned, that we are looking at and that we do need to talk with the committee about, and I'm very glad to attend one of their next meetings. There are a number of the members of the coastal advisory committee that sit on a nonprofit board, and they oftentimes will either attend meetings of their own, of their own committee, or their own nonprofit, or maybe even meetings of the coastal commissioner or something. And there may be a majority of four of our coastal advisory committee members that are attending those meetings. That would be a Brown Act violation. So do we, we do need to make sure that, and the other concern we have is that there's a lot of similarities between what that group is doing, which is fantastic work that the Save Our Beaches is doing, but there's a lot of similarities between what they're doing as that group and what they're then are expected to provide recommendations to the city council on those same items. And so we have to, we're going to have to navigate that very carefully. I think that we may have to take some steps to make sure that we are in keeping with the spirit and the technical aspects of the Brown Act. So that is something that we do need to address with the committee. Should the city council choose to move forward with monthly, we would just have to talk about some additional staff time or where we could find some additional staff time for those additional meetings. And the costs are negligible. I think for the entire year, I think in the staff report, it would be an additional $1,650 for the $55 per meeting for the members of the coastal advisory committee. So it's not really a cost, it's more a resource. It's kind of staff limitations that give me the biggest pause on having them meet more often.
Thank you. Any questions?
Speakers?
Oh. Do we have speakers? We do have speakers, yes. Lois McNichol, followed by Susie Whitelaw, followed by Susan Ambrose.
This is 9D or 9C?
C.
All right. Actually, these all seem to be like tied together for me because of all of the, it's all seems to be about putting together the, how we want to get sand on the beaches and how we're going to do it. I do have to agree with Andy about one thing, the one body I think we need to turn to more and listen to more is our own coastal advisory committee. And they, we have even had some very good suggestions come out today from this particular body and from the audience so that we have a lot of people who have very good ideas that we don't have to be paying consultants $60,000 to $80,000. So therefore, we have a lot of people already that are very interested in making San Clemente a very beautiful beach again.
Thank you.
Susie Whitelaw?
Okay, then speaking as a member of the coastal advisory committee, I believe I was one of the people who really wanted to meet more than every two months. And now having experienced life up on the dais, I don't think that's really the answer to what we need to do anymore. The seven of us in three hours with all the things going on, I'm not sure that's really the most productive way to use anybody's time. I do think that the subcommittees, the ad hoc subcommittees, are really the way to go so that we can get smaller groups of people focused in on things and giving you the right kind of advice that you want. And so I reneg on the asking. It might be useful in conjunction and collaboration with the staff if a special meeting was necessary, that there was something in the ordinance where the staff could ask us to have a special meeting, that that, you know, some emergency came up, that that might be a good idea. But yeah, every two months is, would be good. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Final speaker, Susan Ambrose.
If I recall at that meeting, it was unanimous to vote for the monthly meetings. And I can tell you from experience for the city, since 2010, the people on the coastal advisory committee were really committed to what they wanted to accomplish, working with the city council and the staff we had at that time. And we were able to accomplish so many things, not only in the community, but involvement in community, with the community, as well as the technical things, because we had a diverse group, just like we do now, in our coastal advisory committee. We did make, we did have, we didn't call them ad hoc committees at that time, but we still have had small committees, maybe two or three people, on a particular assignment. And those worked very well. And I can tell you that too, when we, when we would all come back, some of us had strengths in different topics, different subject matter. So if somebody was working down in San Diego or by the river down there and counting pollution, et cetera, he would come back and give us a good report about what's going on and what are they doing about it, et cetera. And all of us had a role like that. And it was, it was really teamwork, and it worked very successfully. So I wanted to come up here and let you know that it worked very well for all those years. I don't think that, and I understand the point of staff demands, but here is also an opportunity for coastal advisory committee to assist Leslia in putting packets together or finding the research for so-and-so, or looking up this, et cetera. I mean, just because we are older, it doesn't mean that we still can't do our research, we can't do these things, we can't contribute to somebody else's part job. So those are my comments on this. I would really urge you to think about giving us the monthly meetings because it's going to be far more productive, particularly with the level of erosion and the sand that we're losing now and all of the other problems that we're having. If you showed our community what we're doing, and by the way, I want to congratulate all of you for your hard work down there on these beaches. I mean, I live close to El Portal, and those, the stairs are even getting a little, you know, a little, stay away from those stairs, but kind of attitude people are having. But there's so many people in the city that really want to be part of the solution. So thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker?
That was the last speaker, yes.
All right. I'll just, I mean, Dr. Whitelaw was reading my mind. I, and I'll do it a hybrid with Susan because she's right. There was a lot of good people, and when I was on a committee, most of the work was done on the subcommittee. You know, we'd have a specific task, we'd go out, we'd gather information, do the research. And I think doing that, and you can have unlimited subcommittees, as long as there's only three people on that, you go, and then I think every two months is probably enough to come back, assimilate that information, and as a committee, submit whatever recommendation they want to make to the council. And of course, as Dr. Whitelaw said, if there's a need for a special meeting, then one could be called. I'll make that motion, that we remain at meetings bimonthly with the recommendation that they institute subcommittees as soon as they can and get to work.
I'll second that motion. Let me ask regarding the motion, the Brown Act issue, we have overlapping expertise on these committees. I think the motion can go forward, but would it be appropriate to tag on that perhaps a recommendation by the city manager on how we address that overlapping talent issue? I agree that, I think the primary benefit for this council is the coastal advisory committee. And maybe we move those people off of the nonprofit so that there's no duplicative. I don't want to recommend how they do their organization, but we need to address that issue. Maybe with the city attorney's input, you can come back at, so address that, so we don't get sued for the coastal advisory committee having a board meeting, or, excuse me, the Save Our Beaches having a board meeting in someone's home or a restaurant or somewhere else, office, conference room, and having some technical violations.
Could that be done through education? I mean, just telling them what the standard is?
Yeah. Excuse me, yes, I'll meet with them and make sure that we address the Brown Act. I think that that's important and that we honor that and we'll make sure to meet and come up with a solution to that.
We want to avoid that landmine if we can, yeah, there, okay.
I appreciate that amendment, yes. Well, yes, I appreciate that. I wasn't voting, I was just saying, yes, I do.
I agree with them.
I think we have a motion and a second.
Yeah. Yeah, we do. So, but we're still in discussion now, so do you have anything that?
Nothing, man. I appreciate what everyone was saying.
All right. Let me ask a question of our city manager, how the, or how the subcommittees work, do they have, for me, the obvious concern is staff. We have one staff person that really is devoted to this, and we've given her an agenda that she couldn't complete if she had two of her. Hold on, hold on, I'm not done. And so, on the, on the subcommittees, how are those staff, are they staffed or are we?
No, I don't think we would anticipate those being staffed. I think what they would do is they would meet on their bimonthly meeting, and they would come up with assignments for less than a quorum of their members to go out and do some research, bring that back then to the bigger group. I believe that's the way that that would operate. We can have that discussion with them.
Yeah, that's the way we did on the Public Safety Committee. We'd have, it was two people then, because we only had five, but you would have an assignment and you would go out and do all the research and then bring it back to the meeting with no staff people.
And that's how you envision the subcommittees? I'm just concerned about.
Yeah, no, there was no staff ever involved in ours.
Any further discussion? All right, and there's a second on that, or did you, go ahead.
I'm just an aye on the motion.
Aye.
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 So the motion carries.
Carries 5-0.
5-0?
Let the record show.
Let the record show.
So, so that will be, and we'll need to bring back a modified ordinance for introduction, just simply because it was a little bit different than the ordinance that was included.
Did we have an ordinance?
I think you're okay with just the ad hoc, we're okay? Okay. Sounds like the existing ordinance would accommodate ad hoc committees.
Very good, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 9D, direction from the city council on the creation of the Coastal Advisory Committee 2024 work plan.
Anyone want to start?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so mayor, members of council, we, I prepared a slide that includes items that the coastal advisory committee has identified as priorities that they would like to work on in the, it's hopefully there. If not, I know you've got it in your packet. Just as a general comment, I noticed that the first three of them are just right on task with what the city council is trying to get in terms of the work from the coastal advisory committee. Again, their job is to bring advice to the city council and recommendations so that you can take action. Number four, depending on how they look at that, and number four is primarily collaboration with outside entities. And I think that they mentioned, let me, in fact, I can get down here, it looks like maybe our slide isn't going to be there, but it says collaboration with others, and it says Beaches, Parks and Recreation Commission. I think we want to be careful about commingling some of those groups, and so we want to be cautious about that at times. Sandag Shoreline Preservation Working Group, depending, and then OCTA, the Coastal Commission. Collaboration is one thing, but committee members probably should not be attending those meetings on behalf of the city. I think that the city representatives, either the elected officials or staff, need to attend those meetings and speak for the city, especially issues with the Coastal Commission and other groups that we work long and hard, and sometimes there are reasons why we take certain actions that we do that may not be evident to everyone in the public. So I just, that one concerns me a little bit. They should probably work a little bit more internal and tell, for instance, there was some talk tonight about Prado Dam. Perhaps the city council would like to ask the Coastal Commission, yes, go research that, see if that's beach-quality sand, talk about the different ways of being able to transport that sand to our beaches, you know, and some of those kinds of things to give direct assignments. But I think we want to be careful with just a general collaboration with other groups because I really think we want to be careful about who's representing the city's stance on any particular item.
Correct, thank you.
I'm sorry, but, but you've got them all in front of you, and they're very aware of them, but.
Well, I know we talked about at some point having every committee or commission have a councilperson as kind of their liaison. We've talked about this, and if we do end up doing this, I think this would be an opportunity for whoever that liaison is to have communication with the chair of the committee, and they could bring that up to the councilperson. We want to look at whatever sand they, and then the councilperson could figure out, is that something the city manager should do, is that, you know, public work should do?
Come back to the council.
And maybe just facilitate it back to where they're not communicating directly, but they're, they're giving the indication that they want that information, you know, received. You understand what I'm saying at all?
Yeah, no, absolutely, no, I think that that's, I think that's right. And I think that we will be bringing to the council for any number of reasons, for consideration of having a council member assigned to each one of the committees. I think that makes sense to go over the agenda, make sure that it's on the work plan, make sure it's something that the council does want the committees working on. Because again, the committees are truly an extension of your staff, they're able to provide you recommendations, provide you information, that we simply just don't have enough staff. There was mention tonight, $55 a meeting is a bargain that we're getting from these guys because they do a lot of work and bring a lot of recommendations to you that staff simply would not have the time or resources to bring forward. So, no, I agree, and that just hasn't been discussed in a public meeting, it's not on the agenda tonight, but we'll be bringing an item to have that discussion very soon.
The other thing is, in terms of the way this is organized and the mandate, it's to bring advice to the city council. These items are not go meet with Sandag and figure out what they're doing, rather, on any of these items, you know, study it, learn, get the information, and bring it to the city council, or to our coastal advisory staff, who would bring it up to us, as opposed to going out and meeting with all these groups and organization. Is that how you're seeing it?
Yeah, that's correct. They're an advisory committee, absolute coastal advisory committee, they provide advice to the city council. That's correct.
I just want to make sure we don't.
Unlike a planning commission that, again, that's kind of the difference between commissions and committees. A planning commission has some final decision-making authority that doesn't come to the council. Committees aren't formed that way, the committees provide recommendations and advice to the council for them to provide direction.
I just, I don't have any questions, I just want to make sure if we have some comments before. I have a lot to talk about this, but I want to make sure we hear from the public.
Comments?
Yes, we do have comments. Lois McNichol, and, followed by Susan Ambrose. Lois, is Lois here?
I think she left.
Okay.
One more time. So I'm thinking about the coastal advisory committee in the past and the expertise that we have right now on this committee. I'm excited with working with this bunch. But I look at these organizations that we may, we put them up on these lists because we wanted to know what they're doing, what kinds of tasks they're working on, how are they helping people, are they potential grant funders, all of these kinds of things. And I see some of the solutions that Andy is talking about is pretty much what I said, you know, that the last time I was up here saying, we could do the research, we can look into these things to see what these groups are doing, and how could that benefit us? And maybe it would open a door to somebody else, a donor, something like that. And it's also wise to be stewards of the city. So, and so Andy, I ask you to think about that and how we can. and how we could be stewards of the city without honing in on a meeting that you don't want us to be in, but the city council member should be there. So, I think that we can mix that in some of those, some of these groups. I mean, I go to meetings with coastal, the California Coastal Commission, or I go with Ocean Protection Council, or there's other things that I do that I don't ask permission to do, just because they know I'm a coastal advocate. So, and I don't often, rarely have I identified myself as a coastal advisory committee member from the city of San Clemente. I refer to myself as a coastal advocate unless there's a, again, a two or three little committee, and they ask you what you really do, then I might offer what I'm doing. So, that shares the wealth of knowledge. And I think that's what we're doing. We have now four people who have geology backgrounds and hydrology backgrounds. And so, they, they're a different group of people than we've had in the past. Do you see where, and I thank you for listening to me when I asked you to really consider more technical, scientific people on our committee, because that's really what we need, particularly in this time right now. So, I wouldn't shut the door on all of us. Some of these people really need to get out to some of those committees to see what they're doing and how they would fit in, and what they can bring back. That's just my two cents worth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on the committee for years.
Mayor, well, the next speaker is coming up. I want to make a clarification. I'm not suggesting that they don't attend the meetings. What I'm saying is that, exactly what she says, that they don't identify themselves as either members of the coastal advisory committee or speaking on behalf of the city. That's the distinction. They, I think it's great that they attend the meetings and they educate themselves and they know all about the coast. It's just, in the past, we have had some challenges sometimes when people represent themselves as being representatives of the city or speaking for the city, and it's not the city council's, what the city council wanted to say. So, we want to be real careful.
Aren't you also saying that it probably shouldn't be part of the work plan to go to these things?
Let's finish with the comment.
Yeah, I'm clarifying what he was saying.
We don't have any additional speakers.
All right, all right.
Well, let's get, go ahead. Oh, okay. Well, I think I made the point there. So, I, you know, having been on council for a while and seeing how our committees work, I'm committed to making sure that they're the most effective for the benefit of the city, and do give that opportunity for the residents to really provide that ground-level input, and particularly on coastal advisory committee where we have all these technical experts. That's particularly important with, I think, probably the top issue. This is existential for San Clemente. Keeping sand is not sort of just a nice-to-have. It's actually fundamentally existential to our economy, to our home values, and to the reason that we're all here, living in this beachside village. So, I'll kind of get right to the point. The issue with that, with that view in mind of making sure that the committee can be the most effective, I think the work plan just has way too many different things on it, right? What we really need is to strike that balance between something that's sort of meaty enough for the council, for the experts on the committee to dig into. We do have geology experts and hydrology experts, whatever that is. I know we have the experts in this area. But also is narrow enough, right, that it's sort of doable and tangible in a year, which is what a work plan's for. So, I think when I look at the list, and we didn't have the list, we weren't able to pull that up, no, I have it here, but I'm just-
Three.
So, there's three categories that are basically identified, which I think are great categories. One is getting sand, two is keeping sand, and three is water quality. These are classic issues for coastal advisory committee. What I would like to see and propose, and I think we can, I would actually, as part of my motion, probably encourage the ad hoc subcommittees to be organized around these three areas, is in the get sand area, let's have them focus, we heard about the scoop permit, let's have them focus laser, like a laser on that scoop permit, right? We have a lot of stuff going on with the Army Corps and our large sand project that's already in place. The scoop permit is kind of a new thing. We have geologists who, you know, this is a lot of inland sand, so geologists who have particular, I think, benefit on that. So, what I'm talking about is bringing back advice about where the opportunistic sand can be brought from potentially, and how it might be best delivered to our beaches, right? So, that would be, I think, sounds sort of simple, but it's actually a pretty intense project. There's unnumerable places. We heard about a couple of them, but there's unnumerable places where we might be able to find sand. So, I would say that that would be one, one part of the work plan. Second one on keeping sand, we have a nature-based solution study that was produced at great time and expense by the city. We have experts who I think can provide a real critical analysis, right, and come back to the council with advice about how that project might have been deficient in a certain way or could be added to. And then council would make a decision about, yeah, we want to go back to that consultant and have them follow up on a certain part of it, or add to a certain part of it, or tell them, we felt this part was deficient, and we need you to redo it, or do it a different way. I think that kind of advice, with the technical skill of our committee, would be really valuable. That would be just a second thing, though, right? Like, there's some other things on there, but I think that would be a big project that would probably take significant time to do, because it's a pretty significant study. And then I think water quality should not be disregarded, right? We still have to make sure that our water, our beaches are clean. We have gotten better grades recently, which is awesome, but Poche Beach is still an issue. And I think that's the hotspot for water quality issues still. That was our one beach that still had problems. So, I'd like to see, as a third part of the work plan, the committee focused on continuing efforts to improve the water quality and overall quality of Poche Beach as a location. And so, that, I think, is also a significant task, because this has been a long-running problem. So, I guess what I'm getting around to is I would say we should have the work plan focus on, give direction, to have the work plan come back focusing on those three areas, and with an encouragement to, if they wanted to get more in-depth, to do the ad hoc committees focused on that. And then, you know, the other stuff, sure, you can continue, you can go to these meetings on your own, you don't identify yourself as coastal committee, but you can do all these other side things individually or otherwise, but as part of the plan where you're coming back to council to provide advice, this is directed to the coastal advisory committee, I think it would be most effective and the most beneficial balancing out the benefit of the advice with the time and effort it takes for staff to participate in all this, if we narrowed it down to those three things.
I appreciate your comments. Any other?
I'll go down low. Yeah, I agree completely. I think we should approve the three items for the work plan. And then the subcommittees that work within those, if they want to, if one of these other entities is a meeting they might want to attend that would help them with their research as a subcommittee, that's great. Again, that's, number four just looks like kind of like an informational resource. It's not really a work plan item. And so, again, that's what I would say. Approve the three, use number four on their own as resources possibly for a subcommittee, you know, attendance or something.
Thank you.
I would just add one thing, that if, if there's something that comes up that's not on this work plan, that the coastal advisory committee says, hey, we really think that we need to take a stronger look on something that's unforeseen in the future that happens, that they would be welcome to come and approach the council to ask to add that to their work plan.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely. And that's another good reason to have a council member as kind of the liaison.
Steve?
No, no comments. I agree with you.
The only other question for staff is, I might ask Leslie about those three items, because she's the one that, or our city manager, whoever feels more comfortable answering the question about their view of the priorities and what would be most useful to them as staff people, and what kind of assistance they need. What would be of real value to the city that coastal advisory committee could focus in on?
I guess I'll answer.
Okay. Leslie, did you-
She's not, she's falling asleep there. But no, so I think, I think you mentioned a little bit about the scoop permit. Well, the scoop permit goes a lot of different ways, right? So, if that was one of their priorities, some of these other items, like study for new sand sources, that would actually be part of the scoop. You know, where are you going to get the sand? Once you have the permit, where are you going to find the sand? And some of that kind of stuff. And that might be part of D, which is the OCTA track stabilization study, and we might need sand to protect the tracks.
Yeah.
So, I think if you were to center it around the scoop permit in this coming year, that's a really good thing, because it's so broad, and something that we really need as a community. On keeping the sand, I think you're right with the nature-based solutions, but we may need to actually take that a step further, and there may need to be actual proven sand retention strategies, like either jetties or groynes or other things that are proven. Not, you know, some of the challenges that we have with the nature-based solutions is that they're good ideas and they're new ideas, but we don't, we've seen some of them in practice, but some of them are just, well, we think this will work. If we're going to spend a lot of money to put sand on our beach, we want to make sure that we're going to find ways to keep it there as well. I think Oceanside is a really good model for that. They did some studies and identified four or five projects, and then ended up picking one through kind of a jury process, and picking one that they thought would be a good project to kind of implement. But the water quality, of course, none of it does any good if the water's not clean. If you can't be in it and you can't enjoy the water, then that doesn't do you any good, and I can speak for a lot of experience about water quality. So, that's, let's not find ourselves where Imperial Beach is in terms of water quality.
Well, the one good thing with this model, when you have subcommittees, I mean, looking at this, it looks to me like number one's the most involved. If you put three people on a subcommittee on that, two on sand and two on water quality, you don't have to prioritize those, because you're working at all three of them at the same time. They all have their priorities to work on those. So, we would be getting all of these items addressed.
Could I, Leslie, as-
As she's coming up, and just to clarify, Andy, because you mentioned it. So, what I was thinking about the nature-based solution study is kind of exactly that, but we've already retained a consultant. We paid them a good amount of money.
Sure.
Like anything, if we get a product back that we don't think is complete or that is missing something, I think we should be able to go back to them and say, for the money we already paid you, we don't, you know, we think you didn't study, and this might be what the coastal advisory committee would come back and say, you didn't study proven models. You came up with a couple kind of random ideas, but we want something that we have confidence would work if we invest in it. We want you to come back with ideas that incorporate proven models. And that advice might come from the coastal advisory committee to us, and then we might act. So, that's kind of what I was talking about.
I agree completely. But the one thing I wanted to be sure of is that, you know, the three items that we've identified up here are the things that might be useful to you as the principal staff person on these, or is there other areas that are a bigger priority for you?
Excuse me, I do, I do agree with the city manager that having the coastal advisory committee members assist with really defining the best opportunistic sources and the ones that could be available at the lowest cost to the city, seems to me that that could be a great option, since we do have hydrologists and geologists. We have some great brain power on that committee. So, yeah, so I definitely agree with that. Water quality, I know, I know a lot less about water quality. I'm not a water quality scientist. I know the city has a water quality program. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities for coordination there and maybe enhancing the city's water quality program. With regard to the nature-based study, that, I just, I wanted to just remind everybody, that's still a work in progress. This is funded by a coastal commission grant, so their mandate was really to look at nature-based and working with nature designs, and to look at kind of some innovative structures as alternatives to hard armoring, like, you know, typical revetments, groynes, seawalls, et cetera, looking more at green solutions, not gray solutions. But what we heard from the community in September, when we rolled out the first set of designs, was, these are great, but we don't want to be an experimental city. We want to see proven strategies. We want to see things that work in the real world. We don't want to be a test case. So, where we are now is, we're on version two of that study, and we have a community meeting next Thursday, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Notifications just went out on that. So, we will be unveiling the second iteration of the design concepts. It won't be the last. It'll probably be, there will probably be at least three, maybe a fourth round of revisions till we get it right, until we get community support and bring the council something that can advance to design and permitting and construction.
Did you say this Thursday or next week from Thursday?
I'm sorry, next week, the 29th.
29, thank you.
29, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m.
And, okay, so that's important to view it through that lens of that this is sort of a continuing project. So, it might be premature maybe for the advisory committee to weigh in, since it's sort of a work in progress. If that's the case, then perhaps a better second point on sand retention, just throwing it out, might be to have the coastal advisory committee, sort of what the city manager was saying, maybe analyze the project that Oceanside's doing and see if that might be something that could work for one or more beaches in San Clemente, because that is a kind of a defined plan at this point, since it's early stages.
Yes.
And then, you know, that might be insightful to see this sort of a little bit more advanced plan and kind of how that work is working, and see if that might be something that we should consider, rather than sort of duplicating or kind of getting into the resiliency study when it's just in the middle of it.
Yes, we are definitely trying to take lessons learned from Oceanside and some of their designs, and employ those here so that we're not reinventing the wheel, so to speak. And we did actually meet with the team that won the international design competition in Oceanside, so we've got some of their designs being embedded in our next iteration that will be unveiled next week.
Okay.
And I think there's space for both proven methods and, in the right places, maybe some newer methods, some of these nature-based solutions. I think it's probably going to be a mixture of both. We want to do anything we can to keep sand on.
I guess I'm just trying to narrow in on what would be the best use of the talent pool that we have in the committee. That's what I'm struggling with on that. I think we're good on this, the scoop permit part. I think we're good on the water quality part, focusing at Poche. I think that second part I'm still struggling with in terms of what direction we might give them as from a narrow task to accomplish this year.
Thank you.
Do you have any ideas on that?
Yes, I think perhaps the March meeting of the coastal advisory committee could be an opportunity to bring the designs to the committee for some input.
Okay.
And feedback, absolutely.
Okay, so we would keep it, keep it as feedback for these sand retentions, but not so much sort of reviewing the resiliency study as a final product, but kind of as that is progressing, review what's proposed and then bring advice and feedback to the council.
Yes, going forward. And I just wanted to clarify that this second round that we're working on now is based on over 100 pages of comments from the public that we received in September, October, and November of last year. So, we've been reviewing the data, sharing it with the team, and then working to revise the designs to be responsive to the community concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Do you want to make your motion now?
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to make a motion that kind of summarizes it. So, I think for this one, we're asked to provide some direction to the coastal advisory committee that will allow the committee to create the 2024 work plan. We have an outline with a lot of great ideas, but I think we need to narrow that down. So, the direction that I would move that we provide is to narrow the work plan to three major areas. One, work regarding, and advice to council regarding the scoop permit to include locations where opportunistic sand might be found, and methods of delivery that we might want to consider as was presented. The second one would be providing input and advice to the council on the sand retention methods that are being discussed and proposed by our consultant with the sand, the nature-based resiliency study. And three would be to work on water quality issues and focusing there on a Poche beach, because that is our major trouble spot in that area.
On that motion, you mentioned the first three items on the coastal advisory committee's work plan. You did mention all the subpoints. Did your motion include all the subpoints, A through G on item one and the other subpoints?
Now, that, well, the point, my point was to actually not have A through G.
To limit it just to what you, just to the items you said.
Yes, yes, to try and make it really workable, so that in a year, they could really dig into this and provide some really meaningful advice to us.
Could you summarize again those points?
Yeah, the first one is the scoop, focusing on the scoop permit, and there's a couple other subpoints that sort of touch on that, like study for new sand sources, but really focus narrowly on that scoop permit, including, again, locations where opportunistic sand might be gotten from. sand might be gotten from, without limit really, you know, there might be more than we've talked about tonight, and also methods of delivery that are feasible to our beaches. Second one is provide advice to the council on sand retention techniques that are both being proposed and maybe should be proposed by the nature-based solution study, and three is give, to give the council on ways our water quality program could be potentially improved focusing on Pochy Beach.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, seconded by Rick. I don't think, I think we've discussed this enough, so if you're all agreeable, we'll just take a vote on it.
Aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, next.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution approving classification changes supporting city manager operation, operations and city administration and revised salary schedule, and we have Hannah Thorndahl.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Hannah Thorndahl, human resources manager. So this item tonight for council's consideration is a resolution approving classification changes that support the city manager operations and city administration. Currently, there are two vacancies that are allocated, and allocated positions that provide a high level of administrative and executive level management to the city manager. Recently, after a review of the city manager priorities and the department needs related to staffing, we identified some recommendations, and they include the following. So first, with the vacancy of the chief administrative officer, there's a need for executive level management of the administrative operations. A revised position of administrative services director will provide the necessary leadership and an opportunity to develop with existing staff. Secondly, reclassification of the executive assistant to executive analyst will increase the responsibility level for analytical and project duties while continuing to provide support to both the city manager and the city council. And third, a new classification of public information coordinator will address the need to have a designated staff person responsible for the coordination of public information dissemination, including on the city's website and other social media platforms. So these changes are supported by the city manager, and they do not increase the full-time equivalent count of current staff and nor do they impact current salary costs. So staff is recommending that the city council will adopt this resolution to approve these classification changes and the revised salary schedule. With that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Do we have any questions? I'll take public comments.
We do have one speaker card. I don't know if she stepped back in the room, Lois McNichol.
She's here.
Yes.
Took a breath there.
Okay, so I just heard that there's going to be no impact, so no fiscal impact, or because we're talking about reclassification and revision of salary and possibly adding a new category of employees, so that to me is going to have a fiscal impact. Why, so you can't sit there and say, no, it'll have no impact, everything will be fine, and it'll be the same as it was before. And we have to make sure that in San Clemente, depending on what meeting I'm in, either we have no money or we are absolutely abundant with it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any further comments?
That was the only speaker.
All right, any discussion, questions?
I move to, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very compelling presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, look, he's got a baby bjorn there.
Next item on the agenda, San Gregorio Park communication site lease agreement.
We did all receive your 50-page documents, just so you know, and reviewed it.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, apologies for the length of that, but for the public's benefit, the length of that packet is because this is an item that did already go through a public hearing process, and before the public hearing, it went through a design review process. So this item is a lease request for a facility at San Gregorio Park. That would be three antennas initially. To be clear, the packet does show a rendering that includes six antennas, so the lease is for three now. If they choose to add the additional three antennas at a later date, the, the lease would increase commensurate with the additional facilities. Lease rates were established by the council back in 2000, and since that time, they've been adjusted on a CPI basis by the equipment schedule. So each piece of equipment is assigned a value, and there's, there's not a negotiation process over price and terms in this type of a situation. So that's the item that's in front of you. The one final piece of information related to this facility in particular is that it was previously a communications facility, so that there is already an equipment enclosure. There will not be a new equipment enclosure constructed. There will be simply new equipment going into the already existing enclosure. And similarly, the existing light standard was designed to facilitate equipment, so there won't be a need for a new light standard at that location. And there are, finally, a number of conditions of approval that take into account the, the active use of that space, and so the applicant will need to coordinate with our Parks and Rec team and our engineering team to get an encroachment permit for any work and, and schedule that accordingly with any city ongoing activities at that park.
This was originally on consent item. We took it, I took it off because I didn't want it, there was some confusion whether this had anything to do with the other tower, and we wanted to make sure that there was no confusion there on this, and it's unrelated.
Correct, unrelated.
Is there any public comment?
We do have one speaker, Lois McNichol.
And I'm so glad you asked that question, Victor, because that is mine. I would have all kinds of trepidation and certainly not very much trust in having any kind of communication site set up close to any residential neighborhood after what happened with that tower over there and all those people who are now trying so desperately to get rid of it.
All right, thank you, thank you. Is there any discussion or does someone want to move this item?
Quick, just a quick question. The rental fee on this, how'd that come about and what's the, how'd that come about?
Yeah, certainly. So we have a fee schedule that's based off of the types of equipment that are.
So the standardized fee rate.
So it's a standardized fee schedule, not negotiated, and it increases with CPI.
Thank you very much.
All right, discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2423.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item, the consent.
Yes, next item is the consent calendar. Staff would like to pull two items.
Okay.
The regular meeting minutes of the February 6, 2024 city council meeting, and, which is item A, and item D, a contract award for four lifeguard tower replacement and approving a supplemental appropriation. That is a request to remove and continue that item.
To pull it from consent or pull it?
To remove it and continue it to a later date.
Okay, what were the number, the letter?
D on the lifeguard tower and A.
Right, and 10A, 10A and 10D, correct.
So D is the one that you want to continue?
Correct.
All right. If it's removed, item D, I'll, I'll move that we remove item D from the consent calendar and continue it.
Okay, and would council like to pull any items?
Wait a minute, so you've made a motion, so we need a second on that, I guess, first. So I'll second that.
Do we?
But, I mean, do we want to, I think this is maybe, is this under our new procedure?
This is under a new procedure, so we.
Okay, so let's be clear on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so under the new policy, staff or city council members can request items be moved off the consent without.
Without voting on it?
Without voting on it.
Okay, remove item D.
Staff.
And since that, we are, since the staff is requesting it be removed and continued, that one would require a motion, whereas 10A is just request to be removed from consent to be discussed, so you don't need a motion on that.
So we do have to vote on it?
Yes.
So was I right the first time?
You were right the first time.
Okay, so I'll.
That's the first time that's ever happened.
Save the tape. I will second that.
All right, so we have.
Well, you have to vote on it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Well, we took the easiest thing and made it difficult.
Yeah, that was unanimous.
Got it.
All right, so now we have public comment.
Well, first, I would like to see if council has any items that they'd like to pull from consent.
Besides A, A's been pulled.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to pull items G and H.
Okay, those are pulled then. Anything else anyone has? All right, then with the exception of it's A, G, and H.
I'll make a motion to move the balance.
Wait, wait, I think we hear public comment first.
We have two public comments on item H, so they would.
All right, we got it now.
Excuse me, three comments, so they would hear it after.
So since those comments are on H, they can be done after you move the consent calendar?
Okay.
If there's no public comment on consent, Madam City Clerk?
I think there was a motion for the balance, wasn't there?
I'm sorry, a member of the public was speaking to me, I didn't hear your question.
The question was, is there any public comment on the consent for an item that has not been pulled?
No, but I think that's what you were just.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a card.
Yeah, if you can do that. So no items on the consent calendar that were not pulled, we don't have public comments on that.
Well, let me ask a question of our city attorney, is, we, I just said we're giving the public an opportunity to pull, to ask us what, to pull something, and if we haven't pulled it yet, if we approve these and they say, pull it, no?
So that's why I asked the question, is we have no public comment on the consent calendar, except for items the council has already pulled.
Got it. All right, we're ready to go.
Theoretically, though, if somebody.
A point of order?
No, it's not a point of order, it's just a question to the city attorney. If somebody would have wanted to talk about I, they could still come up and speak to it, it's just not.
Now would be the time for that.
Before we vote on the balance would be the time to do it.
Correct.
I'm just trying to use this.
But that's not what happened, so I'll move the balance.
All right, and we had a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. Item A, that was not moved because.
Mr. Mayor, the reason that staff asked for that to be removed is so that you could decide on a point of order that was submitted during, after oral communications at the last meeting, and so now would be the time to rule on that point of order. So it says Brown Act violation, council can respond to questions in oral communication.
So that, that's really not a point of order in my.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
In my book, and so I'm going to overrule that. Next item.
So you'll want to entertain.
We got to approve the minutes now?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item.
Item G, consideration of council member travel and training expenses, and we do have one speaker. This item was pulled by council. Would you like to hear the speaker first? Was that a yes? The speaker is concerned citizen.
First, I owe Councilman Duncan a debt of gratitude for bringing up Pochy, very much appreciated by the 500 homeowners there. On this item, and I realize that it's addressing one particular council person, but I'm not talking about this because of who it is, I'm talking about the fact that I don't see how the city residents and our taxpayers benefit by spending money on an individual that is not even going to be with, on the council, serving the city by the end of this year, and wouldn't it make more sense that on all your travel, that you send a council person that has some time to, to serve the city, and that you only send people on travel if it benefits us? That's my concern, and then, there's something else I was going to say, oh, just, most of my comments are prepared with a lot of background information, and I don't hardly get my three minutes. I mean, I always use up the three minutes, so please do not think that I'm disrespecting you if I don't have enough time to address you by your titles. It's a matter of time, and I had to give up something, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tony Rubellino.
Thank you. All right, so this is G, right, for council member travel and training, and this is specifically for Chris Duncan to go to the 2024 March Policy Committee meeting, is that correct? So, I don't know, I, usually there's like a hyperlink within the meeting notes, the agenda, to get more information. Now, maybe I missed it, I'm not sure, but I guess I want to make sure that this item is on here the correct way, and two, I'd also just like to consider the fact that Chris exhausted all of the council budget in the previous fiscal year, right, for, for meetings and whatnot, and so now he's got, what, nine or 10 months left in his tenure here on council. Why are the taxpayers still footing the bill for Chris to go on events that really collectively there's no benefit to the city of San Clemente? There's no benefit, it's kind of like robbing the coffers to provide for this? Now, remember too, Chris is actively campaigning, he's actively fundraising. If he really, really wants to go to this, he can pay for it with his campaign funds. So my suggestion would be, if somebody's got to go to this, pick somebody who's going to be here for the next couple of years, not somebody who's on their way out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
No additional comments on that item.
All right, let's have discussion.
Well, I asked this to be pulled because I have zero information on this. I have a sheet that says it's a policy meeting in Burbank. I don't know who's sponsoring it, I don't know what it's about, I don't have any idea what this is, what it's about, so it's kind of difficult to support.
Sure, happy to talk about that. Yeah, I was selected by Cal Cities, League of Cities, after many years of asking to be on a, a policy committee or in a leadership role, I was selected as one of two Orange County representatives to the Governance, Transparency, and Labor Committee. And a lot of the meetings are Zoom, but this one, they, they want in person so that everybody, and this is cities from around the state, can meet. So it's not just randomly that it's me, it's me because I was selected as, as one of the representatives for Orange County to be on this committee, and that's what this is. I don't know that I will spend the night, but I have to seek approval ahead of time or then I can't after the fact, right?
This is a League of Cities?
Yes, this is a Cal Cities League of Cities Policy Committee called the Governance, Transparency, and Labor, I believe, Committee. And this is, this is one event that they have in person where it's overnight, there's one, there's meetings on one day and then overnight at that same hotel, meetings the next day, so, yeah. And it's $550. That's the estimate of what the hotel, I guess, would be, and transportation maybe. I don't know.
Is there an agenda that it goes two days? Is there, I have no, zero backup, is there any backup on it?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, there's plenty of backup. Happy to provide that.
There's nothing on my agenda, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
Is there, is there additional documentation beyond these, this report?
There is documentation, it was not included in your packets, and it needs, we need to be more inclusive of what's included in your packets in the future, for sure. Yeah, there was, there should have been more information on both these items.
I will, I will say for my purposes, we need to have a lot more information about these. I mean, normally. these. I mean, normally, I would like to see an agenda, the name of the organization, it would help us, and it will help the public and, and understand also. And one of the concerns I have about voting on this tonight is that, you know, we don't have that information, and the public has not been able to look at it and make a judgment and say, and weigh in at, at this point in time, whether they, you know, think it's appropriate. I will say that I will usually defer, almost always defer, to a member of, of our city council. If they, they've made the decision, this is what they want to do and involve their time with, I, I'm probably going to support it, but I don't like it without any, any kind of documentation. And I did look it up, and the documentation, documentation that, that League of Cities has online is that it's a two-hour meeting on that Thursday, it doesn't have it beyond two hours as a policy committee, so, I mean, if I could get an answer to that, I mean, the, online, it says it's a two-hour meeting on that date from 12 to 2.
Right, and then, yeah, then the meeting the next day as well.
It, it doesn't say that online, from what I looked at, but that's why I think it's important, and, and if that's what it says, I, you know, I gladly approve it, but I just don't have the information to make that decision right now.
When is the meet, we have time to get that information before the meeting, they have two meetings before.
Yeah, that's fine, I have no problem with the information being presented before it being approved, zero.
Okay.
So that's totally fine. I mean, again, I, I, I contact the city, I say, hey, I was chosen to do this, I don't know that I'm going to use this, but I want to make sure that I get approval in case I need to, that was all that happened. So, happy to wait until more information is there.
Yeah.
I would hope that you would just trust me, but since we can't do that, happy to wait until the information comes out.
Well, it's not I trust you, I just looked it up, and it said, all it had online was two-hour meeting, so, you know, it could be two separate meetings.
I'll forward you the, the email I got that has all the information, I have no problem with that.
I'll move that we table this item until backup can be provided, and hopefully at the next meeting.
Well, I have it right now, so let's just put it on the next meeting, yeah, I'll make sure everybody gets all the information I got on the meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Our staff can do that, because they have it too. That, that cool city manager just provide all the information that I had, and.
Yeah, I think for sure in the future, we will do a better job of providing the council with more detailed information about, about the travel.
Looks like we're going to need to clarify it, I'll second Steve's motion, and we'll just get it straightened out the next meeting.
No problem at all.
Other than the paperwork, I don't have a problem with your, your decision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Carrie's 5-0. Next item on the agenda is consideration of council member travel and training expenses, and this was also pulled by a council member, we do have some speaker cards on this one as well.
All right.
Speaker first, okay. Amanda Q, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Concerned Resident.
I'm glad that this, that other residents brought up some valid concerns regarding the previous agenda item, and so this might sound like a duplication, but I didn't speak on that item. We all remember last year, Mayor Pro Tem Duncan's DC trip, and in the warrant registry, it came up in, I think it was February the 7th, and, you know, the previous resident said that he, you know, did exhaust all the travel expenses because he had nearly exhausted all the travel expenses for the entire city council members, and then in the process of bringing this, for the city council members for bringing this up as an agenda item, he went on another trip. So, I'm glad that, this is a, I guess an example where the importance of where residents were pulling agenda items, because it led to city council raising this matter as an agenda item, and the result was a city ordinance. This also led to an increase in travel expense, and however looking at this item, there is another concern that goes to council members, that their terms will be ending at the end of November. If this trip is scheduled for April 2024, Council Member Chris Duncan will be a city council member for only seven months, so what is the benefit for that? So what will be the benefit to our city in attending this meeting when council members will finish their term? This reminds me of the Sacramento trip where Chris Duncan was teleconferencing from the Office of Preya McCallie, and was informed that he was campaigning by a city council member. Is this something that he's going to do up in Sec, where this, where this is going to be? Would other city council members like to participate? So, I, I really advise that there should be an amendment, a modification to the city ordinance, because this raises another issue regarding if the city council members are terming out or ending their term at the end of November, well, what's the purpose? They only have, what, seven months? And, so thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Lois McNichol, followed by Concerned Resident.
Yeah, hi. Well, mine's going to be a little bit of duplication, because I do feel like I'm, have been like blasted back to the past, and we're back in last year again, talking about a $5,000 budget for travel, which I'm assuming has not been increased, or maybe it has, but I haven't heard that, or, and I didn't read that. So, the $5,000 is for all of the city council members, and yet it seems to be being used up by only one. And again, and I'll just say this because a lot of other people have, that one person is not going to be a city council member for very much longer. So therefore, how are we using the funds of San Clemente to benefit San Clemente? Because those are, those are some of the things that we need to take into consideration, and in fact, every single time, when you are looking at something, when you want to agendize something, the first question you should be asking yourself is, how does this benefit San Clemente?
Thank you very much for your comments. Any further comments?
Concerned Resident, followed by Tony Rubellino.
Mayor and Councilman. Everything's, I think, has been said. Basically, what I said on G is that, please do not spend our tax dollars on any travel or meetings that is not a benefit to the city. Mr. Enmeyer is new, and I think he will probably learn a lot on his, but I don't see the benefit of sending any member of the council that is terming out. We need to give the people, Mayor, you, or Mayor Pro, sorry, Council Member Noblock, definitely, it should be one of you two going if we're sending two. So, again, please, don't spend money on people that are terming out, and I know, in this case, I know it might help the political agenda of an individual, but don't do it. Give us, give us, let that expertise go to people who are serving our city for, for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Rubellino, followed by Mike Ray.
Okay, so, a lot of people don't necessarily know all the details that you are elected, but you're also, you are also employees of the city. Each one of you is a San Clemente city employee. So, what I'd like you to do is really think about a corporation entity, a business, and if they have somebody that is on their way out, they've given their notice, they're, they're terminating their employment with the company, what is that company going to do? Are they going to further invest time and resources and training and whatnot into that employee, knowing that their investments are going to go right out the door? So, even if these aren't your dollars per se, these are our dollars, and we should have a say in how those get spent. So what I'd really like you to sit there and think about is, not necessarily are you denying a fellow council member travel, but are you using these funds to the best of their ability? Now, I'm not a fan of Mark, we all know that, he's not a fan of me as well, but he's going to be here for the next couple of years, so he should be able to go. That being said, perhaps you could ask him to not push for porta-potties on street corners and whatnot, you know, and maybe even try not to talk about districts and splitting up Southwest. So, anyways, that's another story, but really, think about how these dollars are spent, and what are you going to get the most bang for your buck, and it should be somebody who's going to be here for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike K.
First, I apologize for the pylon. I have a lot of respect for all of you up there. You are volunteering, and I don't think it's too much to ask for a small stipend to go and further yourselves professionally. However, having said that, I'm, I'm troubled that the staff recommended this, and to me, that's, that's problematic. That, that's a, it's odd when I'm reading this, that the staff recommends this authorization. I've heard tonight that the staff is understaffed, needs more money to work on our beach sand issues, the real emergencies that we have. I'm not sure why staff is recommending, or even, even spending 10 minutes, or even one minute, looking in on this. So, I kind of got caught up on that. Again, overall, you guys are volunteers, you do a lot of hard work, you spend a lot of time here, you put up with a lot of awkward moments, let's say. Overall, I have no problem with folks going out and doing their stuff, including the education of a younger Mark Enmeyer, or a newer, I should say, member, being led by, by an expert, our former mayor. I have no problem with that, but it feels a little bit weird when I'm seeing that the staff is saying that this is the right thing to do, and I just wonder why that's there. Small point, but it did want to pile on, and I wanted to pile on because it's a, it's a loud statement, and it's just a short little check and balance to let you know we're all kind of watching. It's okay, up to a point, and I just wanted to emphasize that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Discussion, yes.
Well, I'll say this, issue was brought up of, should someone who, in their last term, still be going to these meetings? And half of what that meeting is, is education. The other half is advocacy. And seeing Mr. Duncan in action at other meetings, I know for a fact that he is always advocating for the city, no matter how many months he has left. And I'll be up there doing the same, advocating for the city, getting educated as well, and I would hope, I would hope that this council realizes that when we are in our last year, that when we have seven months left, that all of us are still advocating for the city, up until the moment that, that we are off the dais, and even after that, that we will continue to advocate for the city. So, this money is well-spent, because it goes right back to the citizens, to helping with sand replenishment, to helping with homeless advocacy, for all sorts of things that help our city out. And, yeah, it, it just seems to me like it, it seems like a double standard. I haven't seen this argument come up before on any other council member in their last term. So, it, that, that's where I'm at on this, and, and I would hope that our council up here does the right thing by helping a fellow council member use this time to advocate for our city.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just want to say, a couple of quick comments. First, for our last speaker, in defense of our staff, this item wasn't really put on the agenda because staff recommended it. These, I understand, are requests from council members who would like to attend, and staff simply processes their request to this council, which needs, needs approval. So, I, I think staff is probably pretty, pretty innocent in this case. I agree, I, I like Mark's comment, but there's, there's a time to serve, and there's a time to be effective in your service. And Mark, I think, being new on the council, attending a league leadership meeting, I think is beneficial for you. You're going to be on the council for three years, you may be mayor next year, in a leadership role. So, I think in this, in this leadership summit, I think it's important that you would attend, but I, I don't see the resources, I don't think that it's necessary to expend the resources on someone, as several members of the public have stated, is basically terming out relatively soon, and this is a leadership, and I, to your comments, I think if I were in my last few months, I wouldn't be asking to go to Sacramento. If I was running for Assembly and wanted to talk to the PACs, I probably would want to go, but generally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask. So, I, I just don't think sending a delegation of this size is necessary, but I, I do support you attending, Mark.
Any other discussion?
Oh, go ahead. I'll say, I, I appreciate exactly what the speaker said. Months ago, when some, I don't even remember what the travel issue was, but I, I said at that time that everybody that, that serves up here, it ends up costing them the money when you go to the events and, and donate to the things people want you to donate when you go to. So, so for that, I, I think going to something that could benefit the city, no matter who you are, what time you have on there, is, is something that we should probably do. I agree with all the comments on, on Mark and the justification, absolutely 100%, even from people that don't really have said they don't care for Mark, they really, they're thinking cogently, and, and they're right.
Just rubbing it in.
Yeah, no problem. But, and, it, listen, if it was, I think sending two people is, is reasonable on, on this. I know we've sent two people to Cal Cities on other things, I don't know what the history of the, of the council is on sending people the last seven or eight months is, I, I have no idea. If it was between, well, Steve wanted to go, or Victor wanted to go, or Chris, I'd say Steve or Victor, because they have, they do have more, more time to go on the council. I, I don't know that either one of you were excluded from this, if you did want to go, and, and Duncan decided, I'm sorry, Chris wanted to go, I, I don't know that, but I doubt that. I just think that probably Victor had some mayor things to do, Steve had some other things to do, and Mark and Chris want to go. I, I would say two things, I would definitely, I looked at the, you know, the, the cost analysis there, and you do have to, you know, estimate up a little bit, if you can find a little cheaper flight, you know, go to Oakland instead of SFO, or, you know, whatever. I, I would, I would hope you would do that, to save the taxpayers' money, and I think you, I think you would. I do think, and I, I will hold Chris to this, and I think I held you to this last trip, when you made to Washington, and said, I want to hear about what, what you did there, and, and there was a lot of good networking you did there with sand replenishment, and I know you worked on the, the federal end of it back there at that time, and came back and had some good networking and some good contacts. I, I really believe he will do the same, because he has to come back and report what he did. I think he'll be satisfied that at least he was working for the city of San Clemente. Again, this is not spots, this is anybody, I would, I would make the exact same comments, I'd make the same comments if I were here and Steve had six months to go, or Victor, because I do think that they will work for the city. I think it's a small amount of money, I, I just, like I say, it's, it's not, this isn't people, this is spots, and there's two people that want to go, and I know that two, these two people will do work up there and somehow come out with some contacts, or some benefit that might help us. Heck, we, we might get help with sand somehow again, you know, and I think that's going to be the first thing on their mind. Any, any help we can get on any issue is going to be valuable. So, again, this isn't about the people that are putting in, this is about the council two people are putting in, and I, I will support that whenever it comes up.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify, I think points have been made, but I mean, the reasoning behind this is that this is a, a good chunk of this particular meeting, the city leader summit, is advocating on behalf of the city that you're coming from, right? So, this isn't, the, there's a regular League of Cities meeting that's also going to happen this year, that I don't anticipate going to, that is more focused on the education part. This is actually more focused on meeting with state legislators, meeting with, with state agency staff, to the extent they're available, and, and advocating very specifically for your city, which is exactly what we need right now. That's why I, I put in for this, I, I think it was open for everybody, more could have put in and, and didn't. And so, yeah, I mean, look, I appreciate everybody's comments, but I'm, the reason I'm doing this is actually because I'm in my, my fourth year now, and I have a lot of experience about the issues that San Clemente has gone through, especially from being mayor last year, and I think that experience will help advocate for the specific needs of the city that we have. So, that's why I would encourage the, the council to do that. I would just note again, it does, I mean, I routinely, without any comment, support other council members going to these kind of things, and I think it's beneficial to the city to have us out there, attending meetings, networking, and getting educated and advocating, and I'll continue to support other council members, and in fact, I supported the mayor and, and Council Member Noblock just a few weeks or months ago to go to their training that they went to up in, I think it was Monterey or something, and so I, I don't know why we're not routinely doing that. not routinely doing that, but happy to explain why I think this is a benefit to the city, and we should, we should vote to allocate these resources.
Well, thank, thank you. Let me just, I did attend one of these last League of Cities meetings, and I would discourage you from going. I mean, you make your own choice, and I will support it. But I can tell you, as one, this was my second meeting for League of Cities, and I could tell you that almost all the positions that the League of Cities took, this city council has voted against. And, I mean, if you look at Prop 1, you look at housing, you look at homelessness, it, they are represented mostly by, you know, the San Franciscos and the LAs and the bigger cities. So, the positions that they've taken are not aligned with San Clemente. And so, I would hope, if you do go advocate, you'd advocate for the positions that we have taken as a city council, and not for the positions that they are asking you to take, which are contrary to our positions as a city, and that you would advocate, you know, forcefully, you know, for, and I'll give you the big example, because I think that's one of the things they have right now, going out to talk to legislators about supporting Prop 1, which we've voted, you know, we voted as a body against. So, at least raise those points on our behalf. I also wanted to point out that, you know, I thought the second conference I went to in Monterey, which was the mayor's conference, I said, well, maybe I'll learn something new. And I can say that, you know, it was a lot of the same issues repeated from the conference I went to a year ago. So, maybe, I probably won't go for another few years, because it's a repetition. There is value, though. There is value in the fact that you interact with other people, and you get to talk and share ideas about what other cities are doing. So, there is value in that. But to go repeatedly, you know, I don't see there's a value. Maybe every couple of years would be sufficient to keep in contact with some of the people. And it's not my judgment, I mean, I'm not going to tell anybody on this council, you know, what they should go to, or what they shouldn't go to. I've made my recommendations, but if you want to go, I will support it, because I think you are serving in a position that you were elected to by people here in San Clemente, and they, they elected you. So, you know, if you want to go to these meetings, it's up to you. I don't think it's a good idea, but I'll support you if you want to pursue it.
Well, I appreciate that. And just to clarify again, yeah, this isn't so much like courses or networking. This is actually sitting down one-on-one with state legislators and saying, hey, this may be different than what the League of Cities wants, but this is what San Clemente needs. Will you support us on that? So, that is what this is, is face-to-face meetings with the legislators, where you get to advocate very specifically for San Clemente, as opposed to larger League of Cities. And then, and having been in those discussions, sometimes there are disagreements between the city representatives. Hey, that won't work for us. Well, okay, sorry, but we need that. So, just to make that point.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
I'll move that we move item H.
Second. There's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next item.
Oral Communications Part II, and I have one speaker card. Amanda Q.
Just one?
Here comes a dramatic lock.
There's the invitation.
We missed you.
Machete's back.
He could be wearing a mask. I would know that lock.
Oh, I'm sorry, my time is, okay, sorry.
She hasn't started yet.
Okay. Okay, great. So, when Adam Atamian did a staff presentation about removing the anonymity on filing code compliance reports or complaints, this really brought back a memory of what happened here in our city. It's always good to know that, to protect the anonymity of people. And previously, what had happened was, there was an FPPC complaint against a council member, Council Member Dan Bain. And he had stated that he, that he knew the identity of the person, because he found metadata in that anonymous complaint. So, I had reached out to the director of Larissa Hahn, and regarding the concerns regarding the anonymity. So, I was really, I really appreciated, because there was a breach of confidentiality and a security risk for an anonymous complaint filed with the FPPC. Mayor Pro Tem Dan Bain claimed that looking into metadata, he was able to ascertain the identity of anonymous author of FPPC complaint. Rather than informing the FPPC, he just contacted the press and publicized it. The purpose was to generate animosity, contempt, and shame, to discourage people from filing future complaints. And as a result, the FPPC put a disclaimer on there that anybody who filed an anonymous complaint to remove any metadata or anything in their documents, or in their pictures, or anything like that. But, so, I'm really concerned, because this could come back to us, as far as members of, you know, doing a public PRA request, and, you know, finding out who this, I mean, to me, it just seems like I'd rather be anonymous, and have that ability, or have that, for a person to have that ability to file an anonymous complaint for a code violation, because they don't want to be targeted. They don't want to go, well, you know, my neighbor found out it was me. I don't want that to be happening to anybody, for any residents. So, I'm really concerned how this was really, I mean, this was pushed through so fast. And I'm really concerned how Adam Atamian was able to do that before any public input on that. I mean, a couple people, a couple residents complained, and they're already going to have ordinance. And how long did it take for the problems at Maxmark Park with RV parking? I mean, it took years to resolve. And it's just, this isn't right. Thanks.
Thank you for your time and concern.
Tony Rubellino?
Do we have a presentation?
Before I start, would it be possible to use, I submitted two presentations. Can I use one that I didn't get to do earlier? Got it. Okay.
Myler can do anything here.
Yeah, really, I got comments.
All right. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so, what I'd like to do is just kind of review some of the things that I was going to say earlier. I know it's a done deal, but I just want to share them anyway, because I think they're relevant. When, I made a commitment to myself a while back, that whenever I heard somebody make some sort of pseudo-intellectual comments about the Second Amendment, gun storage, whatnot, I committed to invest in the firearm industry. So...
Excuse me, Mayor, shouldn't this have been brought up during the item that was on the agenda? Sorry, I don't want to, but I'm looking at the city attorney.
Well...
I believe...
If you could stop the clock.
You can restart it, but...
Can we get our city attorney to, I don't know where it's going in the end.
So, just by this, it appears to be an item that's on the agenda. So, it should have happened at the time that that item was, technically speaking.
Is this all about the...
If I steer away from the agenda item, and just talk about my own experiences as a firearm owner?
Yeah.
No problem. I just want to make sure, I mean, I wanted to throw it to the mayor, because, you know...
I get it.
We need to make sure we follow the rules, otherwise, we have the rules, so.
All right.
No problem.
The thing is over, and I like to hear from...
I defer to the mayor, yeah.
Yeah, I think he has said that he's going to talk more about a personal experience.
Yep, just going to share some stories. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so, like I said, with, with a lot of the pseudo-intellectual comments that have been made over recent months, I've decided that, in relation to the Second Amendment, and gun use and whatnot, Chris Duncan has been a proponent of a lot of that as well. I've decided to invest into the firearms industry. And so, I've been having to make, Chris, this cost me really thousands and thousands of dollars over the last few months. I've been making lots of trips up to Lake Forest to go to Turner's. And because of that, I have really learned the process of what it takes to purchase a firearm. So, this is one where it's the Youth Gun, Youth Handgun Safety Act notice, and it talks about secure storage. Let's go to the next slide. In order to purchase a handgun, you have to first pass the firearm safety and get a certificate. So, it's a multiple-choice quiz. It also talks about proper storage as well. And so, I had to learn about that as well, and make sure that I could disseminate that information back to the proctor. Next slide. There are chapters within that book that are completely dedicated to firearms and children. Next slide. It gives pictures of storage materials. It doesn't talk about putting them under pillows or anything like that. Next slide. The U.S. Department of Justice also has its own paperwork that it provides for safe storage of firearms. And so, it really helped me to kind of understand what I needed to do to make sure that these items were stored safely in my home. There was no question about it whatsoever. It was very accurately communicated. Next slide. On my most recent purchase that I made this past weekend, I passed by my waiting period, I picked up my gun, and I have to go through, and I have to demonstrate to the store what it's like to use a cable lock. How do I make sure that the chamber is clear? How do I release the mag? And all of that, I have to demonstrate, and I can't just talk about it. And this is the first page, as soon as I opened the manual that came with this gun, the very first page, boom, it talks about storage. It also comes with a brand-new lock, which I have here. And so, that comes with all handgun purchases. This is reiterated over and over and over again. Next slide. And at Turner's, I asked if I could take a copy of this paperwork. This is, it's a little hard to read, but basically what it says, "I will keep my firearm out of reach of children, and will store it in a safe place per state and federal law." So, I have to sign this. I have to attest that I am going to commit to this as well. And then, on the back side, it also says, "All firearms should be stored, unloaded, and secured in the safe storage case," et cetera, et cetera. So, in order to go ahead and be considered for a purchase, to execute the purchase, and before I can even walk out the door with the product in my hand, there are multiple layers of reiterating the same point. I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments?
And just as a public information, also, and I believe, Jay, do you, most police agencies will provide you with a free gun lock if you want one. Jay, is that done with the Orange County sheriffs also? Okay. Well, anyway, anybody, let me know if you want to get a gun lock. I'll go up to LAPD and pick some up and get them to you.
Guy's on light duty. Give him a break.
There's a couple of nonprofits, too, that give away free, in fact, they've come to our park before and given them away.
You can get them for free.
Yeah. Let's see, next item on the agenda?
Future agenda items.
I have a request. I've been dealing quite a bit lately with the drug and rehab facilities, especially in San Antonio, where I have three of them pending. There's, there's a bill coming up that addresses financial sort of transparency with these operations that run these centers, some of which have been questionable. And I'd like to agendize a resolution endorsing a particular item that I think will be real helpful in this area. Assembly Bill 2081 deals with the trans, financial transparency related issues with the drug and alcohol facilities. I'd like to agendize that.
Do we have a second for consideration?
Well, I mean, again, I will second it to look at it. Without knowing anything about this bill, I'm not offering any support.
No, I understand.
Support. I'm saying, I'm...
Pardon me?
He just had to set back a bit.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I will, I will second. Not knowing anything about the bill, obviously, I can't confirm I will support a resolution.
We need to look at it and at least think about it.
I think that's fine.
What's the bill number?
2081.
2081.
Is it AB or SB?
AB, AB 2081.
Yeah, I wish I would have known more about it, but...
Well, there's some, there's some register, there've been some articles on it, but I think it's just something that would be helpful for our city to know who's coming to town and be able to, be able to vet them. I don't know that we're going to be able to control it, but at least this bill will allow some vetting.
All right.
And, do we need, well, we've got two, two for agendizing.
Yes.
The second item, I'd like to consider that we, ask that we agendize a, our city manager's been with us now a year, and I'd like to ask, do we have an annual compensation review for our city manager at our next, at our next meeting? I'll second.
Mark is second at third. Third, all right. We've got a report, fourth. No, no. All right, anything else?
Yes, Chris?
I think, Victor, you are representative to the Songs CEP. So, I will defer to you on this, because you're going to these meetings, and I don't know if this is necessary. We did hear about potential threats to San Clemente from Songs, which is a big lingering threat out there, and potentially coastal erosion. I think I'd be, I'd go beyond sea level rise. I'd say all kinds of erosion threats, potentially. So, I defer to you, but I don't, I certainly might support a letter, if you think, if you, as a CEP member, think it might be valuable.
This is something we've taken up at every single meeting. The last meeting, in fact, I think this gentleman is going to come to our next meeting and present. So, it's something that's top of mind. I mean, as you, as you know, the problem is, where'd he put it?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that problem needs to be addressed. I agree completely. I think probably the nuclear waste issue is probably the largest existential threat that the city, that the city could possibly suffer from. And I don't know that a letter's going to help, but I think we need to be a squeaky wheel, to the extent that we can, to get, to get somebody somewhere at the federal level moving on this thing.
So, well, okay, so, the proposal was a letter to the governor. I don't know if, if you think that would be valuable.
I don't know if we're having too much discussion on this, but a letter to the governor has really little to do with it, but...
I think the request was to the, a letter to the Coastal Commission, to study it sooner than what is...
I thought you said Newsome.
They did say Newsome, but if there's, if there's a motion to an agenda...
Oh, but it was about the coastal...
No, no, the letter to Newsome was about...
The letter to Newsome was about creating a state of emergency about the bluff erosions.
This was, okay, so it was Coastal Commission, okay. So, this should be Coastal Commission to have them expedite their review, now I remember, of the corrosive effects...
Because of sea level rise.
On Songs. So, I would be happy to...
It's an agenda item at our, at our next meeting.
Not for council meeting, but for your...
At our next Songs meeting.
Oh, the next CEP meeting?
Yes, CEP.
That the CEP might do such a thing.
But we're looking at it, yeah. So, but, I mean, if you want to get a letter, that's, that's fine, too.
Add to that squeakiness.
Okay, so, I'll move, and then maybe we wait until see how the meeting goes. You can provide feedback on that, in terms of how the letter might look. But, yeah, I mean, we should continue to raise awareness that this is a really important issue for, for San Clemente. And this is two existential things colliding, Songs and coastal erosion, both colliding potentially to cause catastrophic effects.
That's a disaster movie.
That's right, yes, that's right.
I'll also be...
Stakes on a plane, nope. Corrosive effects on nuclear waste.
Yeah, I'll also be bringing this up with our Cal Cities Coastal Advisory Group as well, that talks with the Coastal Commission. But, like, from all point, if we can...
And I will bring it up at the City Leaders Summit. But, okay, so, looking for a second...
Okay, you second. I'll second.
Yes.
I'll get a third, because, do we need a third for...
For a staff report, yes.
Yeah, because they got to write it.
Because you got to write the letter. Okay, great.
That's right, okay, I was mixing up the other thing, okay.
Okay, I have, I have something. You guys are going to love this. You know, we adopted MAP 109, and yay for, yay for us. And there's, there's a flaw that we all, we all know about. We do split a neighborhood down in the Pier Bowl. I will say that I would, if we would have adopted MAP 111, we would have had a problem in South, and I would have tried to address that any way we could, to cure that. We do have an opportunity to make an adjustment on this. I won't go into too much discussion, but I've had conversation with the city manager and city attorney. The golden thing is, is that even the ACLU said if you passed 111... The golden thing is, is that even the ACLU said if you passed 111, 109, or 120, which would make the Pier Bowl inclusive, they thought that that was probably good. There is a mechanism to make this difference, and again, I'm not going to go into it too much. If we can get it agendized, the city manager will definitely lay that out, as will the city attorney. It's just, it's just my feeling, if we can get whatever map we adopted, if we can get it to be the best map possible, we should do anything we can to do that.
I'll second that.
What is you recommending?
I'm recommending that we come back with a, the city manager make a presentation of a path to changing MAP 109 into MAP 20.
To fix, to fix a prob, a possible legal infirmity.
A legal way to make the Pier Bowl inclusive as a neighborhood.
Right, but that would be in compliance with state law that says you shouldn't split up the neighborhood on it anyway.
Or have natural boundaries.
Yeah. Okay, I'll third on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other recommendations? Or things for, items for the agenda? All right.
Commissions and committee reports.
Commissions and committee.
Anything?
Any report?
I'll give a report as our, it's always a little awkward, we have these meetings, and I'm on the Fire Authority Board. We're having our meeting on Thursday, so it's like, I would like to be able to talk about it. Maybe I'll talk about it in March. But, yeah, a lot of key issues for San Clemente coming up at the Fire Authority, continuing, one continuing is the Wildlife, Wildland Resource Center that we would like to have located here, as we continue to have people lose their homeowners' insurance. And, yeah, but, so continuing to work on behalf of the city at the OCFA Board. And I'll report at the next meeting about what we come up with at this upcoming meeting on Thursday.
Any other reports? All right, we'll move, we'll move on to.
Council Subcommittee Updates.
Council Subcommittee Updates. Hearing nothing, council members. Item C.
I just want to report, CUSD liaison met with parents from Las Palmas, the Las Palmas Safety Committee, as well as the school district. Councilmember Duncan was there as well. We talked about lockdown situations and communications. It was really productive. We also talked about fencing in the area. A lot came out of it, really showed how, when we work together, we can really find some tangible solutions. And what was really nice was, a week later, the high school went on lockdown. This was because there's an incident across the freeway, and it was more of a shelter, it was a shelter in place, not a lockdown. But the communication from the OCSD was incredibly fast and responsive, and the constituents that I talked with felt that they were heard and appreciated. So it was nice to see progress made with the CUSD and progress, progress made with the OCSD. So just wanted to say thank you for that, and it was a pleasure working with the community on that issue.
Well, thank you for the Department of the Council. And, you know, we had items that might have been more contentious in the past, and I think we had good debate and good comments from everybody. Again, no matter what side of any issue you're on, you're always speaking for a portion of the residents here, no matter what. And I think that's a good thing, so thank you for that. Also, I just want to let you know, it's kind of a segue in from the gun safety thing. I'm going to be talking to Andy. I've gotten a lot of information from residents on organizations that are nonpolitical, most of them sponsored by police departments or cities that have great gun safety training programs. Let's see if we can figure out a way to maybe integrate some of those into this, you know, and some of the forums we have or whatever, and see if we can get them involved. Because I think enforcement is certainly one thing, but education is the other prong of the fork that you have to have. So looking forward to doing that.
And I just have one observation. At our last meeting, I think we discussed the pickleball of violations at San Gorgonio, and we mentioned we were going to be doing some enforcement. There was a presentation tonight, people climbing over the fence during hours of closure. Is there any, what's the enforcement stat? Are we working on that, Andy? I'm talking about real enforcement for people that are out there on non-hours.
Yes, we do run our park rangers out there, but they see us coming. As soon as we leave, you know, the bad activity starts. I think that we are exploring things like cameras and other things so that we can have a better idea about who people are, and we do need to enforce it better. It's very difficult because the minute we leave, they choose to climb the fence again.
Have any citations been issued that you know of?
Well, I think by the time we get there.
Well, do they, do they, we have sirens and lights, but do we have to let them know we're coming? I mean.
They have to climb up a giant fence. How do they?
I can't answer whether any citations have been issued. I'll find out, but what I'm, but they do see us coming.
I mean, as soon as we issue a couple of citations, this issue is going to really go away.
If we start issuing citations, it'll slow down.
I think so too.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see that, perhaps.
My only.
We will be aggressive in citing them.
My only report, last week, Colonel Baker and I met along with Leslie on the beach to go over the strategy that the Army Corps of Engineers is proposing for the continuation of our project. All the results of our discussions and a meeting with Congressman Levin were put out in a press release last Friday, which hopefully some of you have read, bringing people up to date. The only other issue that, that came up the end of last week was that the Army Corps of Engineers has essentially agreed to ensure that we get all the sand that we have contracted for without paying for all the rocks or cobble that were put on the beach. And that was an important item that we were, we were trying to pursue. And the second thing is, we're well underway in pursuing all the permits for a borrow site that Mattson has desired. And so we have, I've gotten letters from our Assemblywoman, Laurie Davies, and Senator Nguyen, who are supporting us and helping us in the state. So it's a full-court press among the state elected official, federal elected officials, and City of San Clemente staff.
Victor, is that borrow site, it's farther south, and where they're currently getting it for Solon Beach?
It's, go ahead.
Further north. Oh, further north, closer to us.
It's north. It's about the same distance.
Same distance.
Yeah. Anything else from anyone? All right. Do we have a report from our city attorney?
No report. It's just a pleasure to serve the City of San Clemente.
All right.
Well said.
Well said. City manager?
Well, since the over-under was 10 o'clock, I better have something to say.
Oh, you bet over?
Yeah. No, tomorrow I will have been with the City of San Clemente for one year.
Yeah.
I am, I just have to say just how warm I've been received and how much support I've gotten from residents and the city council, but mostly the staff. And so I just wanted to make sure I got that in before the end of the meeting, so.
I think it's the best decision we've made. Anything?
Someone said the only best decision we've made.
Maybe, maybe. Any other items? Someone want to move to adjourn?
We'll move to adjourn to regular meeting scheduled to take place on March 5, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of conducting the long-term financial plan. Closed session will begin at 5:00 p.m., and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. The meeting will take place in the council chambers, 910 KAI Negotio, second floor.
Located at.
Second.
All in agreement?
Noblock second.
Oh. Aye.